All right. Good evening, Happy New Year. Welcome to our first council meeting for this year of 2025. The city council's regular meeting this Monday evening, January 13th. I now call this meeting to order. I ask everyone to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for City Clerk, could you please take roll call?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Here.
Councilmembers Fierko, Guditsky?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Here.
Mayor Newsom?
Here.
We're excited to be here in person this evening with options for those who choose not to be here in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the city clerk. If you're participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine and raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close public comment period for each specific item. Before we begin, and we'll be addressing this more in our close, but I'd like to acknowledge the tremendous loss of life and the devastation to property in Southern California. The entire county of San Mateo has mobilized to fight these wildfires in Southern California. Currently, we have over 150 firefighters from San Mateo County deployed, 13 from our San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department with three units and one battalion chief commander. I'll cover this more, but I hope that we can just take a moment to appreciate the devastation and know that we stand in solidarity, California Strong. As we begin, the first item on the agenda today is a Holiday Decorating Award Small Business Presentation, and the presenters and honorees will be Erica Wood, the President and CEO of the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce, and Mackenzie Jacoby, the Downtown San Mateo Merchants Association Executive Director. I'm pleased to start this evening's council meeting with a special ceremonial item to acknowledge three of our small businesses that really showed their love to our community and holiday spirit. These three businesses are La Lanterna, Lion's Den Shave Parlour, and Asbestos. I'd like to invite representatives from these three businesses to join us at the podium along with the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce and Downtown San Mateo Association.
Mayor Newsom, they are so busy doing their fabulous work, running their businesses. They are unable to join tonight.
All right, well, then we'll keep going. On behalf of the city of San Mateo, I would like to congratulate La Lanterna on 25th Avenue, great place for dinner, for winning the Winter Wonder Walk Best Holiday Decorating 2024 Award, and Asbestos and Lion's Den Shave Parlour for winning the Downtown San Mateo Best Holiday Decorating 2024 Award. I would also like to encourage my fellow council members and the public to patronize these businesses and show them your support. As mayor, please accept our heartfelt congratulations. Thank you for all you've done to make our 2024 holidays a little brighter, and thank you for all you do year-round to support our local economy and community. And now, we would normally take pictures, but if either of you would like to say anything on behalf of the business, I'd open to you from now.
I just want to say thank you so much. It was so fun and very difficult to find the winners in downtown San Mateo. The participation was above and beyond what I've seen in my role, so I hope it continues going forward. So, congratulations to Lion's Den and Asbestos.
And congrats to La Lanterna as well. You know, these businesses are so busy doing their day-to-day. We really appreciate that they leaned in to the holidays to spread some cheer and holiday spirit, and I would just echo the mayor's request that we all do what we can to support these businesses, not just during the holidays, but year-round.
Sure. Would you guys like to bring their certificates to them?
Absolutely.
Moving right along, our second ceremonial item today, our commendatory, nice, commendatory, thank you, resolutions. We have three longtime employees who've retired, and we'd like to acknowledge each of them. I'd ask the three following people to please come forward. Carolyn Shavel, Angela Saccos, and Mike Allen. Right, is Joanne McGreeney in the house? All right, Joanne, our Director of Parks and Recreation is going to come up to join us for this. City Clerk, oh, no, sorry, I'm jumping ahead. Who wants to go first? We'll start with the first one I have here. Mike Allen. Mike Allen? This is a resolution commending you for your years of service. The city of San Mateo proudly recognizes and celebrates the extraordinary contributions of Mike Allen, whose nearly 30 years of service have profoundly shaped the beauty and character of our parks, our city's parks. Mike's unwavering dedication, exceptional skill, and artistry have enriched the lives of residents and visitors alike. And whereas, since joining the Parks Team in 1995, Mike has applied his meticulous craftsmanship and deep passion to enhancing nearly every park in San Mateo. His legacy is most prominently reflected in the Japanese Tea Garden at Central Park, whereas he has served as a curator since 2015. Under Mike's expert care, the Tea Garden has flourished into a serene masterpiece, reflecting the finest traditions of Japanese gardening. His precise pruning, careful tree shaping, and thoughtful placement of every element have elevated the garden to a standard of excellence admired by all who visit. As one admirer put it, "Every leaf is exactly where it belongs." And whereas, beyond his work in the Tea Garden, Mike's contributions extend across the city's parks and green spaces. He has been a steward of nature and beauty, leaving a lasting imprint on the parks that are cherished by our community. Regular visitors to Central Park not only recognize the fruits of his labor, but also remember Mike and for his warm smile and kind words. Always taking a moment to connect with those who stop to admire his work, and whereas Mike embarked on his well-deserved retirement, we celebrate his extraordinary career and express our heartfelt gratitude for his decades of service, his artistry, dedication, and friendly presence will be deeply missed, but his legacy will continue to inspire and bring joy to future generations. And whereas, we thank you, Mike, for your invaluable contributions to the city of San Mateo, we wish you all the best as you begin the new chapter of your life, and now therefore be it resolved that as a city council of San Mateo, we express our deepest appreciation to Mike Allen for his decades of service to our community. Mike Allen, adopted the 13th day of January 2025. I'm going to come down and present to all three of you at once, so I'm going to go through, so don't go away. Next up is Angela Saccos. City of San Mateo has a resolution commending Angela Saccos for her years of service. Whereas, the city of San Mateo proudly recognizes and celebrates the remarkable 37-year career of Angela Saccos, whose dedication, creativity, and passion have enriched our community in countless ways. And whereas, Angela began her journey into the city in 1987 as a part-time recreation leader, working with preschool and school-aged children at Lakeshore and Shoreview Recreation Center. In 1989, she transitioned to overseeing the Meadow Heights Daycare Center, where she demonstrated exceptional leadership, even providing comfort and stability to the children during the 1989, sorry, I don't know why I threw that in, 1989 Loma Prada earthquake, I guess I was there, so. Whereas Angela's contributions included creating licensed after-school programs, coordinating the award-winning summer flex programs, and overseeing youth and adult art, music, and enrichments programs. She also has played a key role in our senior services, rebranding the Bay Tree Bistro Lunch Program and supporting the growth of Get Around Senior Transportation Program. And whereas, as a center supervisor at multiple locations, Angela ensured high-quality facilities and programs while fostering collaboration and building lasting relationships with community partners. Her work with the citywide Special Events Committee further highlights her dedication to fostering community spirit and connection. And whereas, as Angela retires, we thank her for extraordinary service, and we wish her all the best as she enjoys traveling, gardening, and spending time with her loved ones. Her legacy of innovation and compassion will continue to inspire our community for years to come. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of San Mateo expresses our deepest appreciation to Angela Saccos for her decades of service and incredible contributions to the community, adopted this day, the 13th of January 2025. Mags, it's my first day, she's got me through this three times. Okay. The third and final one for this evening is commending Carolyn Shavel for her years of service. Whereas, the city of San Mateo proudly recognizes and celebrates her extraordinary career and accomplishments of Carolyn Shavel, whose remarkable service to our community spans over four decades. Carolyn's dedication to the city began in 1979 and has been marked by her steadfast commitment to fostering meaningful connections, innovating programs, and enriching the lives of residents across all ages. And whereas, Carolyn's career in recreation is a shining example of devotion to the San Mateo community. Her roles have included teaching tiny tots, after-school craft and sports programs, and managing youth and teen programs at multiple community centers. Carolyn has also played an essential role in aquatics programming, overseeing thousands of swim lessons, and hiring and mentoring hundreds of lifeguards over the years, ensuring the safety and employment of countless community members. Her exceptional contributions were recognized with multiple citywide awards, including honors for Lakeshore's programming, her involvement with the City of San Mateo On the Move Special Events Committee, and her dedication to community-building initiatives. And whereas, the San Mateo Sister City Association are equally remarkable and a testament to her dedication to cultural exchange and global goodwill. As a board member since 1999, Carolyn has been instrumental in strengthening our relationship with Toyanaka, Japan. She's coordinated 13 trips to Toyanaka, including those with baseball teams, jazz troops, school orchestras, and has hosted 12 speech contest winners and other exchange participants here in San Mateo. Carolyn's leadership was pivotal in commemorating milestones such as the 25th, 50th, and 65th anniversaries with the Sister City Association. Even during the challenges of COVID-19, Carolyn maintained communication with Toyanaka through innovative means like Zoom, ensuring the bonds of friendship remain strong. And whereas, throughout her career, Carolyn has excelled at building community connections, whether through youth outreach, the senior lunch program, or her creative approach to keeping programs accessible during the pandemic. Her legacy is one of inclusion, joy, and deep commitment to the city of San Mateo. And now therefore be it resolved that the city of San Mateo expresses its deepest appreciation to Carolyn Shavel for her decades of service and valuable contributions to our community. As Carolyn embarks on her well-deserved retirement, we extend our deepest gratitude for her exceptional service and wish her the very best in her future endeavors. Her legacy of dedication, creativity, and connection will continue to inspire us all.
Through the mayor, if I might just say very few short words, just would like to recognize the over 100 years of service combined to these three esteemed staff members of the Parks and Recreation Department who are leaving behind a legacy of their commitment and loyalty to San Mateo. Their decades of hard work and dedication are an inspiration and have helped shape the programs and spaces enjoyed by countless residents and visitors. I'm grateful that my career path has crossed with each of yours. I thank you for supporting the mission of the San Mateo Park and Rec Department by creating community through people, parks, and programs. And with dozens of parks and hundreds of programs and services, you have all touched our residents and their families in many ways. You will always be considered part of our Parks and Recreation team and a part of our San Mateo family. While your retirements mark the end of an era, your impact on the department and the community will be felt for years to come. So, thank you, congratulations.
Mayor Newsom, we have one additional speaker on this item, Sheila Kanzian?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I couldn't let this opportunity go by without coming tonight to express my personal appreciation and gratitude for the many years of service that I spent with these three outstanding individuals. I think Carolyn, you and I came back, came on just pretty much around the same time in the late 70s, and I think as you heard from the testaments that you were given in the, you know, in the speeches, is that each of them have done significant work here in San Mateo. Never once when we asked them to take on a different assignment did they ever question it, did they ever say no, they were always the first ones to step up to the plate. So, thank you for myself and certainly for all the residents here in San Mateo who have benefited many years from their outstanding service. Congratulations and thank you. It was an honor to work with each of you, and I wish you very best in your next chapter of your life. So, thank you very much.
I did also want to make sure that if any of you wanted to say any words, that you were welcome to, but I see you all walking away quickly, so I'm taking that as a no. Okay, thank you. Yeah, please.
I've heard a lot of great words already, and I don't mean to act as though I have a whole lot of extra special ones, but I did just want to note that I really feel like this is a special day and just really glad to be here. And especially with these three fine folks, you know, I feel like I grew up with you a bit. You really helped me have a wonderful upbringing in our city, and your work indeed is felt every day by those who come to the rec center or who come to Central Park or enjoy some of our amazing programs, a number of them that you have touched. So, just thank you very much and I wish you all the best.
Just to echo that sentiment, I also grew up here in San Mateo, as did four of the five council members, and so some of you have been here longer than that, well, I'm not going to go there, but thank you, Mike, thank you for all you've done to maintain our beautiful parks. You'll be greatly missed, and thank you for your service. All right, moving along. The next thing we have up is the consent calendar, right, city clerk? Okay.
Yes.
City Clerk, could you please read the consent calendar?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number three, city council meeting minutes approval. Item number four, city council 2025 regular meeting calendar adoption. Item number five, fund reservation agreement for fleet electronic vehicle charging infrastructure approval. Item number six, construction special inspection services for the clean water program amendment. Item number seven, sale of water-filled barriers authorization. Item number eight, basin sea sanitary sewer rehabilitation project agreement. Item number nine, police department and parks and recreation classification updates. This item has been removed at staff request and will be brought forward at a future council meeting. And finally, item number 10, San Mateo Adult and Career Education Recreation Instruction Services Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, if any members of the public who wish to comment on any consent calendar item, now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only.
Mayor Newsom, I have not received any requests to speak on the consent calendar.
Okay, seeing none, is there a motion from the council to approve the consent calendar?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you please take call roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmembers Fierko, Guditsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
And Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, moving right along, next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents the council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes, however, that is subject to the council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. Mr. Clerk, could you please tally the total number of requests to speak on general public
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Including our virtual participants, we have a total of 10 requests to speak on general public comment, so per council adopted rules and procedures, that is three minutes per speaker.
Okay.
So, we will take our speakers in chambers first, so if I call your name, if you can please line up to my right, that will help us make sure that we get through everyone's comments sufficiently. So, our first three speakers will be Kevin Simpson, followed by Michael Reagan and Tom
Hello, Mr. Mayor, and new council members and prior council members, it's nice to see you all in new chairs and new responsibilities. I'm rising today to respectfully ask that you defer the January 21st meeting regarding the Humboldt Street bike lanes for a later date, preferably at least one month out. This is a very fraught decision that is about to be made. We just had a long public meeting with heavy participation, and there were problems at that meeting, and I don't think it's fair for us to go immediately from that meeting into a decision as early as next week. That meeting is eight days away, and it's still not even on the public city calendar as an upcoming meeting. I don't think it's been adequately publicized, and I don't think that those who use the Humboldt bike lanes are fully aware of it. I went out and did a random sample today and spoke to three members of the public who were using the bike lanes. Not one of them knew that the bike lanes were even under threat. So, the outreach we've done is still flawed. Lots of data, complex data was presented at that meeting, and it was either incomplete or incorrect in some cases. I have just anecdotal knowledge of accidents that weren't in the accident report. We left out important thoroughfare considerations for the safety considerations. We also asked residents to evaluate fairly complex options for what would replace the bike lanes, and we didn't give them an opportunity to ask questions either about the data or the complex options. We frittered away in that meeting the time that was reserved for questions. Asking questions in public so that the entire audience can hear the answer should be a sacred part of public outreach, and it was not done at this meeting. That means each individual has to figure out what may have been right or wrong or incorrect or incomplete on their own, and that just isn't the right way to make a decision. We got into this mess by rushing and doing incorrect outreach. We're not going to get out of it by rushing and doing incorrect outreach. So, I respectfully ask that you defer that meeting until at least February 21st, if not later, so that a correct process can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Michael Reagan, followed by Tom Leese and Claire Stevens.
I have a copy for each of you. Happy New Year. Happy New Year. Hope you guys are having a good start to the new year. My first comment is about regarding the San Mateo Board of Supervisors. It was sponsored by Jackie Spear and David Canapa, probably mispronounced it. They were trying to adopt a resolution establishing a code of conduct for their board, and I think with the way things are going nowadays in our government, I think it's important that we, the city of San Mateo, and also establish a code of ethics. I am on that Board of Ethics San Mateo, and I know we've been working with you for several years trying to get that into our government or to our city government and the departments, and I think blue skies should be, it should be one of those priorities they bring up. My second comment is regarding, and this is what I passed out, there was a meeting that was done on January 17th of 2023. The subject was speed limit update. The last survey was done in 2015 and has expired, and that was, and that's two years since, so now we're in 2025. Both the Public Works and the Police Department recommended to the city council at that meeting to approve the study, and you voted against it, oh, three of you did. Foster City has been informed and has passed their traffic engineering study, and maybe you could reach out to them for their input on getting us back on track. This should be a priority for you. I will not get into the reasons behind the importance, but I believe you should be speaking to the Police Department and to Public Works, and we need to get this on. I think if you look into it, you'll find that it's quite important, and like I said, I don't have time to get into the reasoning, but if you want to reach out to me or, because I've researched quite a bit on the subject, and I think this is important that we get this done, so thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Tom Leese, followed by Claire Stevens and Trina Pierce.
It's great, this is my first shot at 2025. Happy New Year and welcome to Danielle and Nicole, congratulations, excited for you guys. I'm here because I've been volunteering at the San Mateo Senior Center since 2018, and I had the honor to work with Angela and Carolyn, and I just want to give them a lot of, I really appreciated your emotion, and, but for years, I've been telling Carolyn that I was a Dodgers fan, and she But for years, I've been telling Carolyn that I was a Dodgers fan, and she, and she sent me a Dodgers shirt one year, this year, and at my desk at the Senior Center. It feels like a lie because I just want to let Carolyn know because I know she watches these meetings and I'm actually a San Francisco Giants fan. Whoa. So anyway, happy New Year. And also, next week, next week.
Oh, no.
I'm actually a Giants fan. That's, anyway, I mean, Dodgers fan. Anyway, next week, the 21st, there's going to be a very big meeting on the heritage or the historical difference, historical meeting. So maybe it would be a good idea to push the bike lane one because I think there might be a lot going on next week. Anyway, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Claire Stevens, followed by Trina Pierce and Joanne Bennett.
Hi, Council. I'm Claire Stevens, a longtime resident of North Central. I do understand that Public Works will be presenting some information to all of you coming up soon on the review of the Humboldt Street Bike Lane. Over 100 people attended a meeting last month at Martin Luther King Center to hear information on the bike lane, and attendees had an opportunity to express concerns about the effects of losing over 230 parking spaces and the effect it has had on our community. This loss is going to be compounded by a new state law eliminating parking 20 feet from an intersection. I did a quick, rough estimate of intersections in North Central, and there are over 100 intersections. With parking eliminated at all these, that would be over 800 parking spaces. Now, many of these intersections already have no parking because of red curbs or fire hydrants. So let's just say half of those intersections will be impacted. That's 400 parking spaces. Let's just say it's going to be half of that. That's 200 parking spaces. Can you imagine the chaos this will cause? It will have a devastating effect on our neighborhood. I am asking city council to please consider bringing back parking to Humboldt to help offset the loss of parking due to this new state law. Bring back the parking, and let's convert the bike lane to shared, as it is in most of the rest of the city. Thanks a lot for listening.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Trina Pierce, followed by Joanne Bennett and Dennis Bogus.
Good evening to our new honorable mayor and to the two new council members and to our returning council members. Happy New Year to you. My name is Trina Pierce, and of course, I'm here representing North Central again. The residents of North Central would like to thank you guys for having Matt, the Public Works Director. We feel that they have done a good job with Jay, and they are listening to North Central. And this is something big that North Central is really coming out and speaking out now because they feel they're listening to. So, and someone mentioned the North Central meeting that happened on December 4th. That was a great meeting. People came out because they're very frustrated. It's just too much parking gone. And I've talked about so many times where neighbors are fighting each other. They're scared, and I think this city was able to see a little bit of that at the meeting. And it's not just sometimes. And, you know, and we're telling, you know, seniors, just go in your house. Don't fight over it because they're home alone. They can't do that. So we're just asking the council member to realize that. And as Claire said, we're going to lose four spots per block and because of the new law. That's four on, you know, per block. That's quite a bit. So we are just asking that you guys look at that and listen to what the residents said December 4th and bring that parking back since we're going to lose some. Just like you guys to think about your grandparents, your kids coming home from a, and I know I've mentioned this before, coming home from work, getting off of work at 12 o'clock and walking. Not only is the streets not lighted and the sidewalks bad, but there's raccoons out there. And I've told you before, some of them have ran and fallen. And when the bike lane was put in, the funds were given, first it mentioned adults, seniors. The second thing it mentioned was lights and then sidewalks. And then the last thing was maintain the bike lanes. It didn't say install bike lanes. It said maintain. So I'm just asking that you guys listen to these neighbors because they did come out, and they're scared to come out. A lot of them didn't come out before. I'm sending letters that they've given to me because I don't want their names on it. They're sending letters, so I know you guys are getting the letters. I just want you to just realize they're going to be impacted again. And we know that's a, some of them don't know, but it's a statewide thing, so there's nothing we can do. But the parking was not supposed to be installed. I mean, the bike lane wasn't to be installed. That's not what the funds were given for. So we're just asking you to look at all of that, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next two speakers will be Joanne Bennett, followed by Dennis Bogus.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and council members, and congrats to Nicole and Danielle. Joanne Bennett, I'm a longtime San Mateo resident, grew up in San Mateo, and I'm here and echo the sentiments of Trina and Claire regarding the bike lanes. Personally, I have nothing against having a bike lane. It's the parking. I mean, on Sunday evenings, I live on Idaho, so I'm one block up from Humboldt. So on Sundays, it's just crazy. We have people double parked. We have people parking on their lawns. I mean, it's just, it's zoo. So I urge you to take a balanced approach to this and have some common sense, and hopefully we could come to a mutual agreement, compromise, I guess I would say, in solving this issue and bringing back the parking. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker in chambers will be Dennis Bogus.
Good evening. Happy New Year and welcome to new members. I've heard some potentially good news that the city has invited Caltrain to come and speak with residents about the ongoing issue of train horn noise. So I've only heard this informally. I've not found anything on the Caltrain website. The city has information about train horn noise on its page as well, but that has not been updated since July. So I'm just wondering if you could please confirm if indeed there is a meeting that's coming up, if the public is invited to it, and what the city is going to do to publicize that event. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to our virtual environment, we have three hands raised. Our final speaker through Zoom will be user named Zoom User. We will start off with our speaker and the phone number ending 779. 779, please unmute your mic.
Yes, hello. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. My name's Irene Magridas. Good evening, honorable mayor, council members and city staff. Happy New Year and welcome to all new members. On January 2nd, 2025, the Sixth Circuit U.S. Court of Appeals ruling declared that broadband internet providers are not telecommunications services, subject to Title II regulations under the Telecommunications Act. The court instead classified broadband providers as offering an information service which escapes common carrier regulations. This decision limits the FCC's authority to control local decisions, especially around permitting and citing for cell towers. It reinforces that local governments like San Mateo have room to assert their authority without being overruled by FCC regulations. The devastating fires in Los Angeles are a grim reminder of why we must be extremely diligent in what we allow in front of our homes. When a cell tower catches fire, it can spread until the power is cut, which can take an hour. Firefighters or anyone else trying to put water on an energized cell tower, fire will be electrocuted. Three fires in California have been started by telecom equipment failures, Silverado, Woolsey, and Malibu Canyon. The fire danger of having cell towers close to our homes and schools can have devastating consequences. We have witnessed how fast and uncontrollable a fire can spread. We also see insurance providers in California pulling up, placing the burden entirely on the taxpayer. While we are so happy to have a new wireless ordinance in place with 300-foot setbacks from homes and schools, there is still important work left to be done. We want nothing more than to go back to our lives, but when you have expired, unpermitted cell antenna equipment all over San Mateo on my street, still in front of a child's bedroom that's over 60 days, in clear violation of the master's license agreement, when you have faulty permits constantly being approved by Public Works, causing so much distress to the residents, when we've told you that we don't want this, and now we have this new higher court ruling, I think it's time the city invited expert outside legal counsel back. Invite Trip May back. Invite Ariel Strauss and help get it right because it is affecting the residents directly and costing us time, effort, money, and much distress. Our prayers are with the victims in Los Angeles, and our hope is San Mateo never faces the same devastation. Thank you to all for helping to keep San Mateo safe. Sincerely, Irene Magridas, and no sellout.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mike Swire. Mike, please unmute your mic.
Yeah, thank you to Mayor Newsom, council and staff for your work in making the streets of San Mateo safer. I got exciting news from city manager Kajikian this week. He said that according to San Mateo Police Department, there's been a 36% decrease in collisions in North Central in 2024. Now, I don't have all the details of that or locations, but given that Humboldt is on the youth high injury network and the city's local road safety plan is a primary street, I hope we can assume that much of that improvement has been related to the bike lanes that have been in for just about two years at this point on Humboldt. So it sounds like they're working. I'm confident that they're partially responsible for this decrease, and we have not heard of a serious injury on the cyclist, to a cyclist since the 60-year, eight-year-old person was put in a coma there in 2021 prior to the bike lanes being installed. Given the reduction in crashes in North Central since the bike lanes have been installed, I'm puzzled why the city continues to spend considerable time, money, and resources in figuring out how to remove this important safety infrastructure. This all seems incredibly rushed, and I'm frustrated the city might decide to make its residents less safe despite the city failing to answer several key questions around the project. I hope that these are answered at next week's meeting before a decision is made. First, what will be the cost to remove the bike lanes and how will this be paid for? Will bike San Mateo funds be used, and what other projects will this influence? Is this truly the best use of city funds? Second, what outreach has been done to those who are currently on the bike lanes? Kevin Simpson mentioned that there's been no outreach to people who are currently biking and they're unaware. I haven't seen any of those little placards on the street that you do whenever parking is involved. People who are using the bike lanes should be consulted before they're removed. Third, what due diligence has the city done in going through designated subcommittees on this matter? The Sustainability and Infrastructure Committee voted 5-0 in favor, and the city's recently established a Safe Routes to School Steering Committee on these issues. Why have they not been incorporated into this process in detail? Fourth, what's the opportunity cost in terms of staff time and dollars? Which of the projects currently in the pipeline will be delayed? There are over 100 projects waiting to be built in San Mateo, and this will set them back. Six, what will be the influence on the city's ability to win future grants? Will SMCTA, CCAG, the state, and the feds continue to reward San Mateo money when they know that they recently ripped out a project that was installed less than three years ago? Will HUD try to claw back the CDBG funds now that they're being potentially removed? Six, can you promise that the new proposal will be at least as safe as the status quo? If there's a death or serious injury after the bike lanes are removed, do each council member commit to an immediate reevaluation of the project and considering whether to reinstall the bike lanes? Seven, much of the exercise seems to be driven by the perception that the bike lanes were installed without enough outreach. Why is removing bike lanes a solution to a lack of outreach? I don't understand that.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes your time. Our final speaker will be Rick Sakuda.
Good evening. Congratulations to our new city council members and welcome back to our returning council members. I'll be brief here. I would just ask that you've heard several issues from speakers right now, and I would say that I would ask the city council to give preference or credence to those speakers and those concerned citizens that are living in San Mateo and in the neighborhoods that are affected by the bike lanes, by the train noise, by the cell phone towers. And those are your constituents, and I think that's where we need to put our efforts in protecting our citizens and their welfare. And thank you very much. I know this is going to be a caughtly contested issue, but I would just ask your indulgence on that to represent the people of San Mateo and those residents that live in those affected areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We will move on to item number 11, Old Business, Third Avenue and South Norfolk Street Intersection Modification Project Appropriation Budget Transfers and Agreement. And our presenter, I believe, will be Bethany Lopez, our senior engineer.
Hi, good evening, Council. Hi, good evening. I'm here this afternoon to talk about the Third Avenue and Norfolk Street Intersection Safety Improvement and the award, the correlating award with that. This is the staff recommendation. I'll go through this at the end of the presentation as well, and it's in your staff report as well. I'll stop here for just a moment. All right, moving on. So the presentation outline, I'll talk through a little bit of the introduction of the project about the proposed project layout, the intersection operations, some of the monitoring and adjustments that may be done after the completion of the project, and again, the staff recommendation. So just to give some background on the project, the project was intended to, one, address high collision locations. This is a collision heat map of locations in the city in this North Central and North Shoreview area. You can see a few locations pop out, the first one being Poplar and Humboldt, which is a little bit brighter than the subject intersection at Third and Norfolk. We do have another project that's proposed at Poplar and Humboldt to help address some of those collisions. And so this location here at Third and Norfolk would be another priority collision location. In doing some analysis of the collisions in the area, we're not necessarily seeing that there's a high number of bike and ped collisions, but we have heard that there are a lot of near misses here. And so some of the elements of our local road safety plan that we adopted last year suggest to make improvements that proactively address some of these types of collisions or potential collisions rather than waiting for the data to support the need for, the need for the collisions, or excuse me, the need for the improvements. Essentially, make the improvement before you see the collisions is the proposal here. So again, we want to see improvements to the pedestrian and bicycle safety at the intersection. Both the pedestrian master plan and the bike master plan adopted in 2020, sorry, 2012 and 2020 respectively, have identified this intersection as needing some sort of improvement to provide a connection from the Third Avenue Bike Ped Bridge to the correlating facilities in the area. Additionally, we want to look to make an improvement to the bicycle connectivity, again, referring to that bike master plan that was adopted in 2020. You can see here in the magenta color that a separated bike lane was proposed here, and this would be used to connect the Third Avenue Bike and Ped Bridge that I was just mentioning to the San Mateo Creek Trail, and that would connect out easterly to the Bay Trail. It also connects to Ryder Park in that area. We'd also want to use these CDBG funds in, excuse me, we would use. We'd also want to use these CDBG funds in, um, excuse me, we would use, uh, the funding for this is, uh, Community Development Block Grant Funding. It's a grant funding source, uh, that we are able to use in certain qualified areas and in our city. That's the north, the north, excuse me, North Central, North Shoreview and Shoreview Neighborhoods. Um, and so this location being between the North Shoreview and the Shoreview Neighborhoods, um, works well to, uh, meet the needs of this, um, funding. And then lastly, we've heard, uh, for quite a while, and we've seen, um, through our own observations, the challenges with vehicle operations here, so referring to the congestion really, um, in a lot of the directions coming through here. Um, and, uh, we hear about it for the, for the peak hour traffic, um, especially as it relates to cut-through traffic as well as from the neighborhoods. And so that was something that we wanted to take a look at with this project as well. So this is an outline of the design process that we use for a project like this, where we're working to both improve, or excuse me, to improve safety, connectivity, and congestion. So first, we'd start, um, with working to define the goals of the project. And to do that, we've already had some of this information, like I was mentioning, um, with prior calls and observations. Um, but we also wanted to hear from the community about their concerns and how those sort of ranked against each other, uh, for all modes. So this was for walking, biking, rolling, um, as well as driving. And so there's definitely more information about this in the AR, but I did want to quickly note that we were able to collect this feedback with a community survey that was sent out, um, with both mailers and an online version. And the online version was advertised, um, to the schools in posters, um, near the intersection and with the sidewalk, uh, stickers, the decals placed at the intersection, um, et cetera. And we were able to receive around a hundred and seventy responses to that survey and over six hundred and fifty, uh, visits to our website. In the second, uh, part of the process, um, after we worked to develop these project goals, which for this project was bike and pedestrian safety improvements, um, bike connectivity improvements, and also reducing vehicle travel times and general congestion at the intersection, we'd compile that information and start developing alternatives. From there, as a signal operations project, as well as revising, we are looking to revise the intersection layout, um, to help establish these new connections. Um, it really lends to an iterative process where we would evaluate, uh, the layout versus the operations against each other and see, um, which ones really, uh, rose to the top. From there, um, we would, like I said, we would refine those, and we'd, uh, work towards selecting the preferred layout. Uh, for this project, we reviewed three different intersection layouts, um, which were primarily, primarily looking at ways to establish that new bike connection to the creek trail. Additionally, we looked at about a dozen different signal operations options before we arrived at this preferred layout and the preferred signal operations, um, that I'll discuss with you in a little bit. Um, and then after this point, we would work on starting to develop the engineering plans. And so prior to this, um, a lot of the layout design is, is highly conceptual, and then the operations, um, we have a way of analyzing that stuff relatively quickly, and so we can, um, work towards selecting that preferred layout, and then we'd move into the more robust engineering plans like I just mentioned. And then simultaneously, we wanted to reach back out to the community to share what that preferred design was and collect any additional comments to make sure that we were reaching, um, and pursuing the project's goals and that we'd met those goals. Um, we use similar methods as the first outreach, um, except we had expanded our radius, uh, for the mailers from a thousand feet in the first outreach to about half a mile in the second, uh, round. And additionally, we had put together a video, which I'll go over later in the presentation, to help walk folks through what that proposed signal design was, and that was particularly because it's somewhat challenging to describe the dynamic changes that we're proposing with a signal, um, with just static images, which is sort of typical of what we would present, um, with some of our outreach. And so we wanted to modify that process to be able to share what those dynamic changes were. And then as of last week, our website has had about twelve hundred unique, uh, visits, and the video that we posted online, um, has had about, about two hundred and seventy views. And then lastly, we would work to construct the project. So we're just, um, about between the, the prior box that I was just sharing and this location, where we're looking to move forward with constructing a project. So I wanted to discuss a quick overview of the intersection and orient us for the discussion. So, um, you'll see, uh, North Arrow, um, if you can see my arrow here in the, or my, my cursor in the, um, bottom left. So, um, North is really kind of towards the top-left corner of the screen, and Third Avenue is running from top to bottom. Um, you'll also note that the Third Avenue Bike and Ped Bridge is in the lower portion of the page, and the San Mateo Creek Trail is in the upper-right portion of the, of the page. A few things to note about the intersection geometry are the location of this Bike and Ped Bridge, and the fact that it kind of ends right here in the middle of the intersection. Um, this area is also substantially built up, and so, uh, any considerations of widening outside of the curb-to-curb um, roadway was really not considered for this project, as it, as it would require right-of-way takes, and that was not something that we wanted to consider with this project. Another question we'd heard a few times was about the condition of the creek trail. Um, and a quick update on that is that there are tree roots that are causing a lot of the uplifting on the trail, um, and those trees and tree roots are owned by the adjacent property. And so, um, and that's the, the Creekside Apartments. So we're working with the Creekside Apartments already, um, and have engaged them. They've already started the process of working on their permits, um, which are needed because they're working near the creek. Um, and we anticipate that they'll be able to, um, get that, get those permits and then, uh, remove those trees and roots, um, in about a year, which will address a lot of the, um, the challenges on the trail itself. And before, uh, excuse me, before diving into the proposed project layout, I wanted to go over some of the data that we use to drive the project, um, and drive some of the design and operational changes. Um, these are intersection counts, um, and these are usually collected around peak hours in the morning and the afternoon, um, and they're used to help design those signal operations, like I just mentioned, around the highest volumes entering the intersection. So again, these are oriented the same way as the last image with Norfolk running from left to right, um, and Third Avenue running from top to bottom. Um, I also wanted to quickly note where that, uh, Bike and Ped Bridge was, um, coming up through into the middle of the intersection. Um, so just a note on that. So the image on the left shows vehicular volumes, and the image on the right shows bicycle and pedestrian volumes. And so for the image on the left, we'll start in the middle, which shows a total vehicular volume entering the intersection in the morning. This is the AM peak hour, so the morning peak hour. Um, the total entering volume is what this acronym is, um, is around three thousand two hundred and eighty-three vehicles. Um, the arrows on the outside, um, uh, the, of this left image show the total, um, volumes entering or exiting from that direction, and then the arrows in the middle, um, demonstrate the number of turns for that movement. So for instance, this hundred and forty-three on Norfolk is the southbound, um, right turn going from Norfolk to westbound Third Avenue towards the freeway. And a few other things to note about the volumes here are that the amount of vehicles exiting the intersection westerly in the morning, the sixteen hundred and fifty vehicles or so, um, is, uh, is fairly substantial. This is one of the higher numbers that we'll see. And then in the afternoon, we'll actually see this number flip, um, where the majority of the vehicles entering the intersection are actually in the opposite direction, uh, towards the intersection from the same leg. Also note, um, the total number of vehicles that make this northbound left, um, from Nor, uh, excuse me, from Norfolk onto westbound Third Avenue is fairly substantial. Um, typically, we would see, um, our highest volumes in the eastbound and westbound direction or main street direction. Um, and in this case, we're seeing a very high, uh, northbound left turn volume. And that was something that we wanted to note, um, as we were looking to make any modifications to the signal operations and, um, see if there was a way that we could give that movement more time to accommodate those vehicles. For the bike and pedestrian volumes, um, we wanted to note that the numbers near the bike symbols on the outsides, um, are bicyclists riding on the roadway, so riding in the street. Whereas the number, um, the numbers in the middle of the crosswalk, which correlate to each crosswalk leg, um, these are both bikes and pedestrians that are using the crosswalks. Um, and so what's interesting is that the on-street number is relatively low, um, which, um, is, is quite low when we look at these, just one in, uh, two of these directions. But when we look at the crosswalk numbers, the crosswalk numbers are fairly high with seventy in this westerly leg. And again, this is where, um, that Bike and Ped Bridge is coming in this direction. Um, and so, uh, when we looked at these numbers a little bit more closely, um, we could actually see that this seventy was comprised about fifty-fifty of both bikes and peds, um, which is suggesting that there's a demand for bike facilities here because there are bikes present in the crosswalk. Um, however, they're not necessarily using any on-street facilities in this area. Moving on to the afternoon peak hours, um, the afternoon peak hour movement. So as mentioned, you can see that the eastbound entering volume, um, is quite high. This is that nineteen hundred number, um, that I was just mentioning in the past one. Previously, it was sixteen hundred moving away from the intersection. Now it's nineteen hundred moving towards the intersection. Um, many of the movements, uh, make this eastbound right, so the seven hundred and twenty-one, um, onto southbound Norfolk, and most of the rest of them continue down J. Hart Clinton, the nine hundred and twenty, um, vehicles. And so while the northbound lefts are still relatively high in this area, this four hundred and twenty-two, they're, they're definitely less than they were, um, in the morning peak hours. And then for bikes and pedestrians, again, we see, um, a few bikes using the roadway, a handful more in the afternoon than there were in the morning. Um, but again, we, we are still seeing high volumes in this west leg, uh, which again is still comprised of bikes and pedestrians. And there again is that where the Bike and Ped Bridge is. All right, so moving into the proposed design, um, for the project, um, after this, I'm also going to be talking through what those signal operations are. So first, we wanted to, um, establish this new bike crossing in the westerly crosswalk. Um, as we saw in those traffic counts, the bikes are already using this route. So providing a protected path allows for a separation between bikes and pedestrians, um, when heading to or from that Third Avenue Bike and Ped Bridge. So the next part of the design incorporates a new sidewalk level bicycle path to the, um, to connect towards the creek path. So that's the section here, and a new signal, um, and crossing to be able to access the creek trail. When evaluating these layouts, we found that the sidewalk level bike path was able to maintain, um, priority for the northbound left turns as well as the eastbound right turns. Um, since there was only one lane turning from the eastbound right to this direction, so what this design does is actually take one of the southbound travel lanes. Um, and again, on this side, we call these receiving lanes. Um, there's only one lane in each direction pushing traffic, um, into this direction, and so this was, um, a, uh, space that we thought could accommodate this bike facility best. Um, and again, some of the other options that we had looked out for, looked at for the layouts, um, considered bike facilities on this, uh, easterly side of the roadway, but we found that they impeded this northbound traffic, and again, with the volumes there, we really wanted to avoid that as much as possible. So we were also able to, um, maintain the existing on-street parking in this area, and that's what these parking keys look like here. Um, and those, those parking facilities do add another layer of protection for the bikes. The bike signal was a, uh, was a concept that was looked at really thoroughly, as it was understood that it had an, it had the potential to impact this northbound, um, left turn movement. It was decided to operate the signal as an extension of the Third Avenue, uh, excuse me, the Third and Norfolk Signal rather than an independent traffic signal, um, which would allow it to operate exactly when we wanted it to with relation to the, the Third and Norfolk Signal, rather than needing to coordinate it and risk it getting out of sync with the Third and Norfolk Signal. So it's physically connected, um, there's a conduit that'll run all the way down to this location, and it'll be tied into the same computer, essentially that runs the Third and Norfolk Signal. Another decision that we had made for this crossing was to make it exclusively for bike use, uh, with the assumption that the pedestrians could still use the south crosswalk at, um, or across Norfolk at Third. Um, this was decided because the bike timing is much shorter than pedestrian timing. Essentially, when you time a signal, you need to provide sufficient time for whatever that use is to be able to cross. Um, pedestrians have the slowest crossing time, which makes sense, um, and bicyclists are able to travel through the, or across the intersection quite a bit faster. Um, and so again, this was done in an effort to help avoid any conflicts, any additional conflicts with this northbound left turn movement. So because of the new bike crossing and this sort of confluence of these different users at this corner, a no right turn on red was recommended for this eastbound, uh, right turn movement. Um, we did hear some confusion that this sign on the, um, this would be the southeast corner was actually for the northbound right turn movement. Um, unfortunately, that's, um, our error in misrepresenting that. Um, it's actually just two signs for this eastbound right turn movement, um, where we would be recommending that no right turn on red, and right turn on reds would still be allowed for the northbound right turn movement. So in particular, this would keep these eastbound vehicles from encroaching into this space, um, particularly when bikes and pedestrians have the right of way. Another location where the no right on red was recommended was for the southbound right turn movement. This is one location where we'd heard a number of complaints about near misses between vehicles and pedestrians. And so we looked at a way to, um, optimize the signal, which I'll show in just a minute, um, to be able to accommodate this no right on red, um, as it was understood that there may be some additional queuing. Um, but one of the other things that we did just with the layout was we extended the right turn pocket. Um, so this previously had ended, um, just before the, the small elbow in the roadway. Um, and so we chose to extend this to accommodate any additional queuing that might occur as a result of the no right turn on red. Um, and again, in the next slide, it's all discussed, the proposed operations to help some of the concerns that we had heard about those no right on red signs. All right, so before jumping into the animation we create, that we had created to help describe these new operations, I wanted to show a quick overview of the order of the movements that you'll see. So I'm going to show what the actual signal heads look like for each movement. I'll walk through that. Um, but before walking into that level of detail, I wanted to start with just a really high-level overview of the, of the movement, um, operation, the movement sequence essentially. So first, we're going to start with the southbound movement and the corresponding westerly crosswalk. And again, this is the crosswalk where we're seeing, um, a lot of that activity, the higher volumes, as well as, um, the Bike and Ped Bridge connection there. Second, we're going to see the northbound movement, um, and we'll talk quite a bit about that one, um, along with the easterly crosswalk. Third, you'll see, um, the eastbound and westbound left turns come on, and this is when we're going to introduce the conversation about the bike signal operation. And then fourth, you'll see your typical through movements for the east and westbound movements. All right, so I'm going to run through this animation first, talking through the various movements. And because there's a lot of, a lot kind of going on in the video, I wanted to point out the specific signals that you'll want to take note of. So you'll see the enlarged versions of the signals pop up, and then I'll play the animation, and you can see when the signals change to reflect what that one, uh, these larger ones look like. Um, so I'll pause the video, um, as I'm talking through the sequencing, and then at the end, I'll play it one more time, um, so you can see it sort of all working, uh, together. So the first one, like I mentioned, you'll see the southbound movement start. Um, and so you're going to see the pedestrian signals come on, um, and you'll see a green arrow for that southbound, or excuse me, a, a green ball, what we call a green ball, for the southbound through movement and the southbound left turn movement. Um, what you'll also see is a southbound, um, right turn, uh, excuse me, red arrow. So what this is doing is limiting, um, or restricting the right turns, um, while we have this pedestrian signal on. And so here, you can also see bicyclists crossing, um, in this new bike, uh, crossing leg. Um, and then you'll also see the bike signal is green currently. Next, you'll see these, uh, the, excuse me, the pedestrian signals go to a don't walk, meaning that pedestrians should no longer be crossing during that time. Um, the southbound green ball would stay on, and then the southbound right turn would get an arrow, an exclusive arrow, um, which separates out these pedestrian movements from this, uh, right turning movement. And again, this is one of the places that we had seen and heard, um, a lot more about the near misses. And so this is one of the places that we wanted to focus, uh, this separation on. And so again, you can see that there's no crossing in this westerly leg, and the southbound right turn movements have, uh, a free arrow to be able to make that turn. So next, you're going to see the northbound movement turn on. Um, and with that northbound movement, we've introduced a new phase, um, a new movement, which is this eastbound right turn. Um, so this eastbound right turn is going to get a green arrow, and you'll see that momentarily. Um, and this is what's called an overlap. It's an added efficiency to the signal that wasn't there previously. Um, and again, this was intended to help, um, some of the concerns about the no right on red and any potential additional congestion that that may be causing. All right, and moving on. The next movements that you're going to see are the eastbound left and the westbound left. A similar operation to this, to this eastbound right turn movement and northbound left movement will have a similar operation with this eastbound left movement and southbound right turn movement. So the southbound right turn movement will get a green arrow along with the eastbound and left, excuse me, eastbound left and westbound left movements. You'll also start to notice the bike signal turn red. And so in the volumes, one of the things that we had noticed was the time that had the least volume coming towards the bike signal was when this westbound left turn was green or when they, when they are moving towards the signal. And so this was the time that we found optimal to operate the signal and it'll operate at this time every time. And so these are those eastbound and westbound left turns. Momentarily, you'll see the southbound left turns also turn on. Again, this is a new added efficiency to the signal. The, and so coming back here, you'll see that the bike signal will turn green again during that time. And that'll allow those vehicles to flow through again. So moving on from there, we'll be servicing the eastbound through movement and the westbound through movement. So these are again, your typical eastbound, westbound through movements. The bike signal will stay green through this time as well. During this time, you'll also see the typical servicing of the eastbound right movement, which is the, the green light that they previously had. And from there, we've also reintroduced another element to help add some efficiency to the signal. And this is pertaining to the eastbound left turn. What we've found is that there's a lot of queuing in the eastbound left turn. However, there's right of way challenges as you get towards the end of that lane so that we are having such that we're having a challenging time extending that lane any further. And so what we're finding is that that lane will back up. And so by reintroducing this, we're calling it a reservice. And that's the sort of technical term for it. We're able to give that green one more time and help folks get into the North Shoreview neighborhood. And hold on. Let's see if I can get that to pop up again. So this is that reservice, like I'd mentioned, with that eastbound left turn coming on one more time. And so I'll play it one more time so you can just see the whole thing operating. This is the southbound movement with those west leg pedestrians. This video is about two minutes long, so we'll have to bear with me. Again, you'll see that southbound right turn movement turn on when the pedestrian phase has ended. Now the northbound movement will turn on along with the eastbound right turn movement. From there, the eastbound and westbound left turns will turn on. And again, simultaneously, the bike signal will turn on and you can see the bike crossings right now. And a lot of that, again, it happens right at the beginning of these turning movements. And it's hard to see here, but this is a bike signal and it's turning red along with the vehicle signal part of that turning green again. And then our through movements. And then that resurfaced eastbound left turn. All right, so putting this together, these are analysis findings with these proposed changes. Typically, we would look at an entire, an entire intersections delay values. You may have heard the phrase levels of service or delay. And what that is, is the average delay of all of the vehicles, the, all of the intersections volume and how long it takes each vehicle to pass through that intersection. And so typically, again, we would look at the existing values, compare that to the proposed values, which I'll show in a minute. But I also wanted to talk through each movement and how they're proposing to change. And I'll walk you through a few of these. But do also know that the values in green are where the values, those delay values decreased, so they improved. And the values in orange are where they increased. So when we look at the delay values, the lower the value, again, the more likely that that movement is closer to free flowing, the higher that value is, the more likely that that movement is to be congested. So generally, when we're looking at the changing timing here, we also wanted to make sure that the heaviest movements, we generally want to make sure the heaviest movements are accommodated. But because we're also familiar with this intersection being heavily used by cut through traffic, we wanted to keep that in mind and try to focus a lot of our timing improvements on access for the North Shoreview and the Shoreview neighborhoods where we could, while also providing those bike and safety pedestrian, excuse me, bike and ped safety benefits. To that end, you'll see the north and south, northbound and southbound movements have improved significantly. And that's these movements here, some of them, you know, browned or greater than 50%. For the eastbound movement, this eastbound right turn movement, you'll see that the total delay, excuse me, increases slightly in the morning and in the afternoon. These values are still relatively low, especially when comparing them to other values at this intersection. And they're still indicative of relatively free flowing movements. For that southbound right turn movement, you'll see that the delay has actually decreased slightly in the morning and a bit more significantly in the afternoon. And then overall, with these improvements, what we're seeing is that there's been a slight decrease in the morning in the, in the total amount of delay from 63 seconds to about 58 seconds. And in the afternoon, that it's a little bit more significant from about 60 seconds down to 54 seconds. So following construction of the project, the intention is to absolutely continue monitoring it. We have a handful of different monitoring methods. We will be updating the video detection cameras, which are what's used to detect presence of vehicles and peds and bikes. We also have CCTV cameras, non-recorded, they're there for active monitoring and we have that ability to do so from our offices. We would also be able to collect additional traffic counts. So we have these pre sort of before traffic counts. We would plan to take additional traffic counts in the future that would likely be done around September when our sort of traffic count season, if you will, reopens. And that's when school starts again and we have more normalized traffic comparing them again to the ones that we currently have. We would do in-person observations and then enforcement is also an option. If there's any adjustments that are needed, the first and foremost thing that we would look at is modifying the signal timing. We do anticipate that there's always refinements that are needed to that signal timing. That's a relatively easy thing to do. Again, it's a computer there at the intersection, something that we would be able to make changes to pretty readily, very inexpensively. Another option is a right turn on restriction using only, using only blank out signs or only implementing it when pedestrians are present. So rather than a full-time right turn on red, using the blank out signs, which is what's shown in this image here, could be an option. I think some of the challenges with that are the, the compliance rate with them tends not to be as high as the full-time right turn on red. We've seen that with other locations that have signs like these. And so that sort of risk versus the safety benefits that we're seeing with the bikes and peds is something that we can consider later down the road. And then full removal of the right turn on red, which again would now allow right turn on reds is another possibility. And again, that's something that we would need to compare to the safety benefits that we're seeing otherwise. So again, here's the staff recommendation to, and essentially to move forward with the ward of the project and move forward into construction.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lopez, for the presentation. Before I open it up for public comment, I have a request to take a five-minute recess. So we'll do that and re-adjourn for opening public comment.
Soon as we get council back in their seats. All right, picking up, we are going to open up for public comment. The conversation topic is the Third and Third Avenue and South Norfolk Street Intersection Modification Project.
Certainly, Mayor Newsom, before we go into public comment, we are hearing reports of some technical issues with the audio in our YouTube stream. Zoom appears to be working fine. So if you are currently watching the meeting through YouTube, if you transfer over to our Zoom feed, you should be able to hear everything just fine. And all of our information for the Zoom feed is available on our website at cityofsamateo.org.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Moving on to public comment, we have received two requests to speak on this item in chambers. If you wish to speak on this item and you're in our Zoom environment, please raise your hand now. We will be calling the last speaker, after which time we will not take any additional speakers, so please raise your hand now. Mayor Newsom, that is a total of seven requests to speak. So and our final speaker in our Zoom environment will be Max Motner. So in council chambers, we have Kevin Simpson, followed by Seema Patel.
Thank you.
So, okay. Yeah, I chose to speak on this topic because as somebody who lives on Humboldt Street in North Central, I only have two parks available to me. One is way up in the northern part of North Central and one is the tiny one right around the corner from my house. For me to access our beautiful Bay Trail and our beautiful shoreline parks, which are gems of our city, I have to get on the Humboldt bike lanes and then go down to Third Avenue and throw my life into the hands of everybody who is transiting on Third and Norfolk and Humboldt and that monstrosity of a bike transition across all those streets. Look, we're taming a really ugly dragon here or attempting to. And I'm all in favor of the efforts that city staff have put together to do the best we can right now with this nightmare. I do want to put this in context, though. At the same time, we're talking about making these long overdue, probably somewhat inadequate improvements to safety here. We're talking about reducing safety for people who want to go access those resources. At the other end of this, bike
So, okay, I'll use them up. Yeah, I chose to speak on this topic because as somebody who lives on Humboldt Street in North Central, I only have two parks available to me. One is way up in the northern part of North Central, and one is the tiny one right around the corner from my house. For me to access our beautiful Bay Trail and our beautiful shoreline parks, which are gems of our city, I have to get on the Humboldt bike lanes and then go down to Third Avenue and throw my life into the hands of everybody who is transiting on Third and Norfolk and Humboldt. And that monstrosity of a bike transition across all those streets. Look, we're taming a really ugly dragon here, or attempting to. And I'm all in favor of the efforts that city staff have put together to do the best we can right now with this nightmare. I do want to put this in context, though. At the same time, we're talking about making these long overdue, probably somewhat inadequate improvements to safety here. We're talking about reducing safety for people who want to go access those resources. At the other end of this, bike lanes connect to one another. If we're going to have a safe way to get around and access the beautiful resources we have in our community, we deserve to look at them in context. I also want to point out that it's not just bikes, it's scooters, it's e-bikes, it's skateboards. People are using a lot more than just traditional bicycles to get around. And it's not just recreational. People are using these modes of transportation and these routes to get to work. In my neighborhood, they're using scooters to go work at the restaurants downtown, coming from North Central neighborhood. They're using it to go out and access the parks, which we should be rightly proud of here. So I hope we will continue to remember that the bikes that we're talking about are very different. They're faster, the skateboards, the scooters are all different and much more prevalent. And that all of this exists in a context. So I hope we aren't going to take one giant step forward and two gigantic steps back, and that you will think about the full context of what safety and access really mean in a city that is as complicated as ours. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our final speaker in chambers will be Seema Patel.
Good evening, City Council, Happy New Year. Congratulations again to the new faces on the dais, so good to see you. I currently serve as the Chair of the Planning Commission, but I'm speaking tonight on my own behalf as a resident. On September 17th of last year, Yolanda VR was struck and killed while crossing Peninsula Avenue at North Delaware Street, an intersection that nearby residents had been complaining about for years. A month later, on October 30th, a woman and her dog were severely injured after being struck by a vehicle in Hillsdale. A month after that, on November 27th, a pedestrian was struck and killed near the intersection of El Camino Real and Hillsdale Boulevard. That's two people killed and one person critically injured in a two-month period. In the aftermath of those tragedies, I would have expected the city to declare a pedestrian emergency, quickly discuss potential causes and solutions, and roll out some quick build improvements. Instead, the city has delayed these critical safety improvements at Third and Norfolk once, another intersection that residents have been complaining about for years, and have begun investigating the removal of bicycle safety improvements on Humboldt Street. In February of 2015, after San Mateo adopted a Vision Zero policy, then-council member Joe Gothel said, "No loss of life is acceptable. We can do better, and this plan is the road to doing better." My biggest criticism is the talk about this taking decades and decades. It can happen faster than that. Here we are, one decade later, and we're still losing two to four community members a year to unsafe streets. It took this city less than a year to approve a 300-foot residential and school setback for small cell wireless installations. I know this isn't the case, but it does feel like the city is more concerned about the health impacts of 5G than residents being killed or critically injured while crossing the street or riding a bike to school. It's time to stop delaying on safe streets, and it's time to start taking action. I urge the City Council to approve these critical safety improvements without further delay, before another unavoidable tragedy, and to empower the city staff to ministerially approve safety improvements up to a certain size. We must move faster to make our streets safer. No loss of life is acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to our virtual environment, our next speaker will be Mike Swire. Mike, please unmute your mic.
Hello again, and thank you for considering this and bringing this to council. Great work to Bethany and staff. This is a good example of what our talented staff can do when they're afforded the time to think about safety instead of revisiting the past and revisiting, questioning projects that have already been agreed upon. I recommend that we adopt the proposal as is. I think it's great. I do not support the red light on demand. I spend a lot of time walking and biking by the 92 intersection on ECR, where they do have the right light on demand, and I think compliance, as staff said, is far lower than a full-time no right on red. And even then, compliance cannot be optimal. So let's keep things simple in a changing and complex intersection and make it full-time no right on red. Again, I think we need to ease the burden on staff and move forward. Our public works staff is down three key employees. Sue Ellen, Casia, and Nikki have all recently left, and I don't believe any of those positions have been backfilled. We should be letting them do their work and move forward and accept their recommendations. And we've got 100 projects in the backlog. If you look at the people that are moving to San Mateo, the future is all about people that want walkable and bikeable neighborhoods. We should be thinking about those people that will gain the most from these projects over the years and going to where the puck is instead of where it, or the puck will be instead of where it is now. I'll point out that this intersection was bright yellow on the map, just like Humboldt and Poplar was. These are two of the largest crash intersections that we have in the city. And finally, as Kevin Simpson said, the reason that this is so important is that Third Avenue was one of the few safe connectivities for people to move from the west to east side, get to the Bay Trail, get to San Mateo High School. The Hillsdale Bike Bridge is basically back to square zero. The 19th Avenue Fashion Island Project is $9 million short. This is the way that most people in San Mateo get from one side of the highway to the other. And if we're not, as Kevin said, the success of this project depends also on the remaining connectivity for people trying to get north, once they get to the other side. If you're a student going to San Mateo High School from Shoreview, you need to cross Third Avenue, and then you need to take Humboldt about a mile north. So if we want kids biking to school instead of 16-year-olds driving down Humboldt, this is the way that we want to go. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rick Sakuta. Rick, please unmute your mic.
Good evening. I attended the meeting at, in Shoreview with regards to this on January 7th. There was a, quite a large public turnout there, and there was some antagonism towards the project. And I believe that this was because the public felt that they weren't informed of the project from the beginning, that they had only found out, like myself, at the very last minute after everything had been done. So with that being said, I think our outreach is lacking here, not on this project, but on virtually all projects where you have the public complaining that they knew nothing about this until after the project was completed. And I'm not casting aspersions or pointing fingers at anybody because it's a difficult situation to get the public informed. But I would say that we need to do a better job of informing the local residents of these projects that are upcoming. And I had proposed to certain members of the council that we have a neighborhood dashboard where we, as a city, could post all the pending developments and improvements slated for a particular neighborhood, where people could see what's going on in the neighborhood at one place, rather than scouring the internet and the city website to try to find out what's going on in their neighborhood. And that would take away the opportunity for people to complain that they knew nothing about it. So I think that's where this, the resistance is coming from. I hope that all the voices from the community have been heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be user with the names Zoom user. Zoom user, please unmute your mic.
Hi, my name is Colin Mader, and I am a resident of North Central. Sorry, not North Central, Central. Thank you for getting to this much-needed improvement of this most important and awful intersection for bikers and pedestrians accessing this neighborhood, downtown from this neighborhood, and generally the bay from San Mateo. You have clearly done a great amount of work, and I look forward to it getting done and not be wasted. Many people have told me they find this intersection too dangerous for them and their kids, and wind up driving instead, which adds to the traffic that we endlessly hear is a problem. For over 10 years as a resident of Central, I have used this intersection alone and with my children to keep healthy, be outdoors, and enjoy the bay. I have also used it for many years to commute to a job in Foster City via bicycle, car, and motorcycle. This intersection is the problem in those trips. Dangerous, especially with drivers speeding because they just got off the highway or think they're already on it again, or are rushing through a right on red. As a city with generally excellent weather, we should promote healthy alternatives to driving. As an expensive city, we should prioritize safety and access to resources, even for those that do not have automobiles. And lastly, people's lives and safety are worth more than a few seconds wait in a car. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Maggie Trin. Maggie, please unmute your mic.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Hi, everyone, my name is Maggie Trin. I am a board member with the San Mateo Foster City School District, and I'm speaking as an individual board member. I do want to say that I really appreciate staff's attention to all modes of transportation at this intersection. And I'm glad that there seems to be a solution that improves all modes of transport, which is pretty rare, I think. You know, many of our San Mateo Foster City students from, which covers, and their families, which covers from preschool age all the way up to eighth grade, use this intersection, including the bike and pedestrian bridge, as we have a number of families from the west side of the 101 who attend schools on the east side of 101, and I'm sure vice versa. And I frequently see older children using the bridge in the afternoons after dismissal, both to return home and to spend time with their friends. And there are very few, as you know, protected 101 crossings. There's a couple of places to cross over the 101, but many of them have cars going at high, high speeds. And so this is, you know, probably the best place to cross in all of San Mateo. Not to cast aspersions upon the Monte Diablo Bridge, but there's a lot of twists and turns there, so it's a little trickier. And so I think also over the last few years, I think we've all noticed on the roadways a greater number of scooter, bicycle, and other non-driving trips throughout the city. I also want to point out that, you know, we can't deny that climate change is upon us. And, you know, and I think that most of us probably have connections in the LA area who have been affected by the fires these past, this past week or so. And it's all connected, right? This is, we know that, that in order to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, that we need to move away from, from individual car trips. And this, and, and the way that we can encourage that is to have safe modes of transportation for, for all. And so I encourage the city to move forward with this project. And, you know, nothing's perfect, I, I recognize that. And I, I think that there, it also seems as though there is some opportunity for potentially, you know, looking at the data after it's been in place for, for a little while and then seeing what that looks like. And we can always make adjustments. So thank you again to staff, and have a good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Allison McQueen. Allison, please unmute your mic.
Hello, good evening. My name is Allison McQueen. I'm a North Shoreview resident. I've used this intersection as a driver, as a pedestrian, and as a cyclist multiple times per day for the last 15 years. I've made public comment on this intersection many times, and I will take every opportunity to protect the people who use this intersection, including children. Third and Norfolk is a vital nexus on the east side of San Mateo as this area is hemmed in by the 101 and the bay. As Maggie just spoke about, it connects to eight schools, both public and private, San Mateo Downtown and Transit and the Bay Trail. It directly connects to the Humboldt bike lanes, enabling Shoreview residents to bike to access multiple schools and amenities in North Central and Burlingame. It's the key part of a network. And the network is kind of like, you know, a Christmas tree or a human body where all the bones are connected. Or a Christmas tree, if you don't have the trunk, then the branches have nowhere to stand. And that's what we're talking about when we're talking about Humboldt, and we're talking about Third and Norfolk, about all of this needs to be connected. It's almost like connective tissue in someone's body. This intersection is very unsafe for all modes of transit. Per City of San Mateo data, I use this intersection daily. Every, almost every time I use this intersection, I'm almost hit by a vehicle running a red light or making a red, right turn on red without looking. Just this morning, after meeting with some city officials about some safety improvements in another part of the city, it's pretty predictable, I was almost hit by a red sedan whose driver did not check for pedestrians before turning right on red. I had a walk signal to cross the street on my bike, but stopped my forward progress to avoid being hit. The driver never even knew I was there, even though I was two or three feet from them. The proposed safety improvements protect pedestrians and cyclists while improving vehicle throughput. Per City of San Mateo data, as Maggie said, it's a win, win, win for all modes of transport. And I appreciate the possible scenarios and creativity that were taken into account by the city staff in the plan for this intersection. This intersection is the main reason parents have told me that they do not want their child to bike or walk to the eight schools in the area. It's a known safety hazard, and I have often described it as a death trap. I can't wait to publicize the safety improvements to our school communities and on our bike-to-school rides in preparation for next school year. Vehicle traffic congestion is a major complaint of San Mateo residents, and the safer we make biking and walking, the more people will choose to walk or bike around San Mateo with a resulting reduction in traffic congestion. In short, this project greatly advances safe routes to school and Vision Zero. Let's get it done.
Thank you. And our final speaker in Zoom will be Max Motner. Max, please unmute your mic.
Hey there, am I muted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Hello, I'm Max Motner. I'm a D1 resident, and I wanted to share and relate a letter that myself and 68 other San Mateo residents signed and shared to City Council, affirming that staff's proposed changes to the intersection are desirable and essential to making it a safer intersection for all. Highway 101 is a regional corridor, but it cuts up our civic communities severely and really curtails mobility and access to both sides of town. One of them on the east side of 101 being the Bay Trail, which is our biggest city park amenity. This kind of infrastructure project at Third and Norfolk is incredibly inexpensive as far as facilitating access to existing park space without needing to acquire new land or build any new infrastructure beyond paint and light infrastructure. Lastly, I wanted to echo Rick Sakuta as far as finding better ways to reach the community and giving them a heads up about infrastructure projects. I really appreciate the way that staff put together their video, which I, I think a lot of people didn't take time to watch, unfortunately, though I really appreciate that media format. And I myself watched it and found it to be really helpful explaining and being able to share forward to other folks who had questions about the project. But I think one other actionable, perhaps, feedback for staff to communicate with the public is providing some kind of guidance on what's coming in Public Works, similar to the way that Planning Department has, what's coming in Planning webpage, something that people might be able to, to reference or check. I myself submit a lot of D11-style tickets to the city when I notice lights outages or street infrastructure problems, and I'm always appreciative of how quickly Public Works gets back to me. But on the other hand, Public Works doesn't let me know when they fixed the tickets. So I think there's a lot of opportunity for communicating back to the public, the timeline of these projects. And I do appreciate the video format, but like Rick suggests, I think having somewhere that folks can reference to see timelines of projects and what's coming up in the queue would be really helpful. So thanks all, that's it.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
Very good. Let's go on to have questions and comments from the council. Councilmember Kadiki has expressed interest in going first, as this is her first meeting.
Yeah. So I do want to first start by thanking staff. You know, we heard a lot of comments tonight about transparency and communication with the public. And I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, there was a lot of, there were two phases actually of community outreach for this project, and an extra meeting was added on the east side of 101 on January 7th. So there was extra, you know, steps taken in the process to make sure the public is aware. I do have a series of questions, if that's okay. So just to start, and so for the public's awareness, a grant fund was received at this intersection close to the tune of $900,000. close to the tune of $900,000, and that is something that is typically granted for equity priority communities, correct?
Yes.
And then just so we all understand, if we reject this plan, is there enough time to come up with an alternative proposal and still have access to those funds?
I don't think we're going to lose the funds, but if we don't expend a certain amount of the funds by a certain date, it puts us in jeopardy of getting future funds, and it puts us on track to have to go through a bunch of administrative hurdles with housing and urban development in terms of the CDBG funds.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I know this was mentioned in the presentation, but just to confirm, can you share how many alternative design options were considered and how many alternative signal design options were considered?
I think I'm going to let Bethany cover that one.
Yeah, we analyzed three different layout options and just over a dozen operational options before coming up with the ones that we moved forward.
Okay, great. Thank you. And in your opinion, is the selected design option the safest of the options you considered?
I would say that these best facilitate the separation between pedestrians and bicyclists compared to the other options that we had, and the bike movements are the most direct. So I would say they are very safe.
Great. And in your opinion, is the selected design option the least likely to cause congestion at the intersection?
That was absolutely a goal of ours, and we absolutely threw away, threw out options that exacerbated the delay at the intersection. And so I think that the conclusions that we came up with do reduce the delay the best that we could find.
I do have some questions about the turn signals. So just to confirm, if traffic is stopped at the proposed bike crossing, and you're turning onto South Norfolk from the leading eastbound left lane. So for the public, this is as if you're coming from St. Timothy's off J-Hart Clinton. In your opinion, will drivers making a left onto South Norfolk have enough time to stop at the upcoming new bicyclist crossing light?
Yes, I anticipate that they'll have enough time to stop there and then proceed through. And I think if I recall correctly, they will simulta, not simultaneously, but they will see the red light, but then they will also get a green light all within the same time that they would have their turn signal on. So it all happens sort of at the same time for the bike signal, if that makes any sense.
And has the city analyzed how many cars fit between the space between the left onto South Norfolk and the bicycle lane? So this would be starting at the donut shop from the time, you know, there's that new bicyclist crosswalk or crossing and light.
I think it's about eight vehicles fit in that space.
Okay. And then since this is a new light that's being added, are there going to be additional warning signs for drivers that a second light is coming so close after they've turned from that leading left?
I think the signage that we're proposing is in compliance with the state regulations, which do indicate, you know, additional warning signs as needed. So, but we are wanting to make sure that it's as clear as possible. So if there's additional warning signs that are needed, we can certainly add those.
Okay. And now I'm going to talk about that right turn going eastbound. So just to confirm, has the city, and it sounded like in your presentation this was done, but did the city conduct a traffic study about that off-ramp off 101 onto Third headed eastbound, which today in peak hours, you know, routinely is full of cars?
So the analysis that we did was primarily at the intersection, not necessarily at the off-ramp, but that does account for the volume that's coming from the off-ramp, as well as any volume that's coming from further west of the intersection. So it is accounting for both of those. We are aware that there's residents that are coming from the off-ramp and trying to make the left turn at the eastbound left to go north into North Shoreview. And we do think that the design accommodates that better than it currently does.
And then I just want to confirm, because when I look at this intersection, it seems like there's some behavior modifications. So are we planning to have any traffic guards or police officers at the intersection if these changes are made so drivers can understand about the changes?
Yeah, we've definitely heard some concerns about enforcement, and I think we can work with the police department to see where they can station themselves. I think some of the challenges is where they can post to be able to do that enforcement. And I think we're still working with them to see if there's locations that are possible for that.
Thank you. I have one more question, I promise. But I just want to understand what adaptations should drivers, pedestrians, and bicyclists expect during the period of construction and how long we anticipate construction could be?
So our construction days, the way that we measure our working days is in individual days, so 45 working days equates to just over two months. So two months of construction or two and a half months of construction. So I do also anticipate that the way that we're working towards the construction, it will be phased into two separate parts. And the reason for that is the long lead time for the signal poles that we're needing to procure. So signal poles take around six months to procure, so we'll probably start a lot of the concrete work first and foremost. And then we'll need to come back and get the rest of the signal work done, but all of that can only take two and a half months or so total. And so the first part of that will be very similar to, say, a paving project. Sorry, not a paving project where we're closing entire road, but a lot of the, you know, ramps or anything like that, the concrete work associated with that. We do that in the middle of the day, work outside of peak hours as best as possible. And then for the signal operations, that's when we can see sort of a flipping over of the existing operations versus new operations. And again, we work to minimize the effect to peak hour traffic when doing so.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. That's all for me.
Who wants to go next? Start with Lisa.
Thank you very much, and thank you both to Bethany tonight for doing a great job, both here and at the meeting, and to Matt and Catherine and Kenny for being there at the community meeting. It was definitely an overflow crowd, and you all behaved with professionalism and confidence and really listened to what people had to say. So I think that's reflected in the presentation. And thank you for asking lots of my questions, Danielle. I appreciate it. You know, a couple of things, I'm very excited about the, the update that Bethany you gave about fixing the bike trail and the fact that you have some specific path going with the apartment building, because that we heard from a lot of the cyclists. I mean, the bike path right now is fairly unusable. So that's, that's a great piece of, of news. Another comment that I heard from a lot of people was that St. Timothy's and the buses were parked on Norfolk. And, you know, is there something that we can do to talk to St. Timonese, Timothy's to alter that so that that takes one more block out of the way? And I'm assuming somebody has that on their list to follow up with?
I think we definitely heard that comment at the meeting, and we will follow up. I don't know, Bethany, if we have followed up, but if not, we will be following up on that.
Yeah, exactly. We have talked with St. Timothy's about their circulation plan, and that's something that we can certainly follow up on.
Right. I also heard, and I think this, this sort of goes to the communication side of things, which I think you've addressed a lot tonight, but that in all the communications going forward to say, here's what we heard from residents, here's what we heard from cyclists, here's what we heard from pedestrians, and here's how this improvement is going to address that, so that people feel not only that they were heard, but they're, you know, you're taking action and you're doing it. So you just need to promote it, you know, because that's, I would say that's Public Works' number one sin. You do great work, and then you don't tell people you're doing it. So please, please take that into consideration. And I think that also is part of, how do you measure the impact of the work? And I know that earlier, I think it was Mike Swire on the line, was supposing that the, you know, the bike, bike lanes on North Humboldt had something to do with the decrease in accidents. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's the kind of thing that, you know, in this intersection that we should really be trying to track so that we can give everybody understanding of, is this really doing everything we want it to do? Let's see. And then I think there were a lot of questions on Zoom as well about how do we give more information to the residents upcoming? Is there a neighborhood bulletin board? You know, how do we tell people? Everyone should know that the staff across the city has started a project to introduce a CRM system, which will actually bring together all the information of all the various departments so that ultimately, one view of that system will be made available to the public. So the public will be able to see what is happening. So that will begin to address Mr. Sekuta's concerns. And that the staff will also be able to show wherein the queue people's emails and phone calls and all the things you send in, and you don't know what's happening to them, that will start to, you'll be able to see where it is in the queue. So that's a process, assistant in process. I'm particularly thrilled because that was one of my blue skies, so I'm totally biased. But just keep, keep hoping, you know, that this is really happening, and it should bring great help for residents and also for staff, so you don't have to answer everybody's questions five times. So thank you very much. I'm really excited about this effort.
Do you have anything? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you very much to staff for this presentation. I, I, I I'm not going to be able to hide how much I enjoyed it. I thought it was awesome. And I think Councilmember Nash brought up a couple of, of the reasons why in that, you know, one is, is definitely showing the work and that's going into projects like this and, and giving the, the folks a sense of how their comments and concerns are being addressed in, in this project. And it's an, it's an extra good project, I think, to show in that it has this win-win-win potential. So very exciting. I did have one quick question about sort of the, the, the signal and, and design that we're looking at today. I apologize, Bethany, if you mentioned this in your presentation, but I was curious about whether it's possible to change signal times and operations during the day to reflect the shifts in traffic that you showed in, in AM and PM, or if we had to come up with something that maybe worked relatively well for both?
No, you hit it the first time. There are possibilities to make changes based on the peak hour traffic. So as I was mentioning with the traffic volumes in the directionality that they're coming in in different peak hours, we're able to modify the signal timing during those peak hours and at other various times of the day to be able to accommodate that time. So it's not just one sort of average best for the entire day. We can absolutely make modifications to those timings as the demand suggests.
Excellent. That's great to hear. And I'll just mention in comments that I support this project, partly because it aligns with our bicycle master plan and general plan goals with regard to circulation. And chiefly, it's increasing safety. It has the potential to reduce collisions. It will make San Mateo more accessible to non-car transportation in, in what a number of members of the public have highlighted as an important area. It, it helps North Shoreview and Shoreview, as well as North Central and Central and others near the Third Avenue Bike Ped Bridge. Ryder Park and Bay Trail are, are great and popular, and this, I, I think will just improve our city experience for so many. Just to touch on something that Councilmember Nash brought up about, again, sort of showing the work and, and giving people a sense of how they're responding to community concerns. Sorry if, for any popping here. I'll try to maybe talk here. I did just want to give my appreciation to the, the, you know, Public Works staff for their work on the page, the webpage. I, I do think that, for what it's worth, it did a pretty good job of outlining what we heard from the survey that was conducted in 2023. And boy, when I look at the design and the video, and, and it was also kind of spelled out on the page itself in text. I feel like this project did an extra good job of responding to a number of top concerns that came from the community. So I'm really glad that we all went through the video together, because I was thinking that if we didn't, I would be asking people to watch it. But we all watched it, so it was great. And we broke it down, and we really looked at it multiple times. So this is awesome. But, you know, yeah, I, I think, you know, and that might be it, actually. Some of that was me talking about the video that we already saw. I, I do think that I, I wanted to mention that this will boost, I think, bike ped use and, and maybe pedestrian use of the Creek Trail. Because right now, without a lot of signage, I think for people who don't live in the area, it might just look like private property or a dead end or something. And so I, I think there's an opportunity to really have a new gateway to an important recreational amenity. And I'm so glad to hear that we're going to be able to make progress on that particular piece, too, as, as Councilmember Nash brought up. And so I'm, I'm just very thankful. It is pretty hard right now. I think I'll, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, just to touch on a few things that weren't addressed, or maybe they were and I missed it. Bethany, on the intersection, former Councilmember Hedges was talking to me about this, this past week, and he had asked about a pedestrian scramble or the idea that when you're coming from the central median overcrossing for pedestrians and bikes, would it make more sense to have the pedestrians be able to do a diagonal crossing, you know, east to west, as opposed to having to go through two crosswalks to get to their destination? Is that something that you looked at? And I'm assuming that it probably added more time and slowed down the intersection. It was just, but I just wanted to validate if that had been looked at.
Yeah, you're spot on there. So pedestrian, exclusive pedestrian phases or pedestrian scrambles is, it's also called. Do you have a tendency to increase the delay at an intersection? We were also looking at sort of the paths of travel, and the paths of travel are still a little bit awkward going to and from the Third Avenue, the Bike Ped Bridge there in the middle of the intersection. And so for those reasons, that was one of the options that we briefly considered, and, and it was put aside because it really didn't meet the goals of the project. We do have other locations in the city that we're looking at them, and actually will be installing them, including at the B Street Ped Mall. So it is something that we're looking at generally where we can implement those. This was not one of those locations where it makes sense.
Okay, thank you. I give Councilmember Hedges a point to the back. He's, he's awake back there, I think. Can trucks exiting what used to be San Mateo Rentals, now Herc Rentals, make a U-turn now at Norfolk, or will that be going away? Also, they occasionally are leaving from the alleyway and driveway. And regularly, I watch them drive through, which they're not supposed to do, but drive through what will now be the bike lane crossing on Norfolk. I'm wondering, has that been considered? And is there anything that we can do to make sure that they, they're not, you know, A, pulling out of Herc and crossing all the way across and then trying to make a U-turn, or worse, cutting through the bike lane that, that's going to be there?
Yeah, so the U-turns will be illegal now for that northbound left turn. And that's to help facilitate that eastbound right turn green arrow that we talked about. Again, to help that throughput for the eastbound right turn. As far as the vehicles making a left out of that alley going to the northbound left turn movement, I believe we are extending the median a little bit further south, so the gap actually is going to close in a little bit. And we will be implementing a right turn only. That is something, a conversation that we've already had with the business owner. There weren't a lot of concerns when we raised that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would say, and it sounds like you're already doing this, but make sure particularly Herc Rentals, Golden Bell Donuts, they, those are places that have high traffic coming out of those parking lots. Make sure that they know what the expectation is, and perhaps even suggest to them having some signage in their own parking lots, like left only, et cetera. I think we've talked about this, but are we confident that we will be able to get the tree roots resolved on the Creek Trail before we have this work done? I don't know if that's, is that a Bethany question, or is that a?
I can respond, since I know my head's probably giant in the room. So I know that we're already working with the property owner there. I know that, that's something, I believe it was a condition on that property. So it is something that we're now pursuing. They are aware of it and they are starting to pull their permits. I don't anticipate that that creek trail repair is going to be complete by the time this construction is complete, but it will be shortly following.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm embarrassed to say that I'm a lifelong resident and I didn't know that that creek trail was there until this project. And I walked my dog there earlier in the week. And the other thing that I noted, which I think we addressed on the consent calendar, was that there are a bunch of white partitions that run through the creek trail and they kind of split about one third of the creek trail. I think that those are up for sale, but if they're not, it would make sense to slide them all the way to the one side. You know, one side or the other, instead of having them kind of breaking up the street, unless there's a reason for that.
I think the water barriers that you're describing on the trail are there because of the root damage to the pathway, just to make it a little safer for people. So once the repairs are completed, then those would be removed. But you're right that there was a consent item for a sale of water barriers that we weren't using.
Okay. So, but those aren't the water barriers?
No.
Okay. Also, side note, some of those water barriers have mosquito larvae in them. So we should get mosquito abatement to address that.
Good note. Yeah.
Yep. The weird things you see when you walk your dog. Bethany, I'll take it back to you with this one. The PM peak, did we include in the PM peak when St. Tim's School is getting out? I mean, I'm assuming, you know, PM peak is usually a little later than that, but did we? I don't know if they get done at 2:30 or whatever, but did we pull it forward? So we're accounting for that traffic?
So the counts that we did do, that because we're close to schools, we did an extended count. So we would take it from 12 to six. We still use the highest volume at the intersection to dictate the design. And typically those school hours just don't rise up to the same amount that you'd see your typical sort of workday ending, people heading home, peak hours from four to six. So we capture that just to have that information, to see if there's something that we need to include in the design. It didn't rise to the top as far as the design criteria goes.
Okay, thank you. Well, all in all, I'm in support of this. I think priority for us, and I, this, this intersection is one that I've crossed as a pedestrian and a cyclist and a driver. And it scares me in two of those three. So I definitely recognize that we need, we need to make these changes. And I, I like what I've heard tonight in that, you know, we're going to be evaluating this. If for some reason we're finding that it's not working, it sounds like we have a plan to be able to be agile and change timing of lights, et cetera. And so for that and those reasons, I'm in support. I will now ask if any other council members want to make comments before we ask for a motion. Does anybody else have comments? No? Okay. Then does anyone want to make a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Do you want me to read the motion?
Motion can just be the staff.
Do we have a second?
Bethany, if you could please.
Yeah, I can share. Give me one moment.
Thank you.
Thank you for not making me read this. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Can you take the count, please?
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Sverko Guditsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
And Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
How do you like that? Our first motion, five all. All right. Moving right along. Next up is item number 12, solid waste 2025 rate setting and proposition 218 notification approval. We'll have a presentation from Jack Johnson, Waste Management Supervisor. The purpose of this is to provide direction on proposed increases to residential and commercial solid waste rates and commercial organic collection rates and authorize staff to mail a proposition 218 notification to all property taxpayers proposing a not to increase, a not to exceed increase in solid waste recycling and compost collection rates for 2025. Welcome, Jack.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Jack Johnson.
Hi, Jack Johnson. Thank you for the introduction. We are also joined remotely by Gabe Sasser and Rick Simonson from HF and H Consultants. And we are here to talk to you about our 2025 solid waste proposal. The request of council. It's not moving. The request of council is to provide direction on proposed rate increases to authorize us to mail a Prop 218 notice and to provide direction on the use of reserves. Solid waste rates pay for all collection, transport, disposal and processing of all waste, recycling and organics collected from residential and commercial accounts in the city of San Mateo, as well as our street sweeping and solid waste program, including illegal dumping and anti-litter. The annual rate review process, rates are reviewed every year by the council and are, and once adopted are effective for one year. And the city is required to follow state law in setting rates, which means that all rates must be based on the actual cost of service. In 2006, there was a pay as you throw system adopted. But since then, the state has imposed recycling and organic collection mandates, which remove the need for the pay as you throw system. And Prop 18 requires rates to be based on the cost of service. And we have lately been seeing cost increases that exceed inflation. Last year, the city took these steps on the slide to come up with the rates. We are asking that you adopt similar things tonight. And Gabe Sasser and Rick Simonson from HF and H will go into more detail about those efforts. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
Good evening. I'm Gabe Sasser and I'll be covering the remainder of the presentation. As part of the rate making process, the first step is generating the 2025 revenue requirement, which is comprised of three parts that you see here on this slide. Recology collection costs, which are increasing eight percent for the calendar year 2025. Disposal and processing costs, which are increasing by seven percent relative to 2024, as well as city fees, which include the solid waste program, street sweeping, trash capture device maintenance and franchise fees. Next slide, please. This slide summarizes the costs associated with the 2025 revenue requirement. It also accounts for the cap carry forward amount from 2024, which was a one-year defray of the costs in order for the city to save on interest expenses that it would be paying to recology. And we're also recommending a similar procedure of deferring $331,000 as part of this year's rate setting procedures. The total revenue requirement is just over $333 million, as you see on row nine of this slide. And with revenue at current rates, the city would face a shortfall of more than $1.58 million. Next slide, please. Fortunately, the city doesn't have to make up for this deficit all in one year as recology maintains a balancing account. And at the expiration of the franchise agreement, which happens to be 2035, the city would owe recology for any deficit that occurs at the end of the franchise agreement. And it's always been council's direction since the end of the prior franchise agreement to keep the balancing account as minimal as possible. Next slide, please. The balancing account is a reflection of years over year revenue reconciliation. The 2024 revenue reconciliation is expected in March. But based on our projections and reconciliations from the prior years, the city would owe a balance of more than $1.2 million in its balancing account. And that's why, as part of 2024's rate setting process, we recommended and ultimately council adopted a million dollar remittance to recology from the solid waste enterprise reserves, which would yield a $222,000 deficit, significantly reducing that amount. Coupled with the $1.58 million shortfall that I talked about on the previous slide, the city faces a cumulative shortfall of $1.8 million by the end of 2025. Next slide, please. So there are a couple of steps in order to address this revenue shortfall. One is to increase revenues by addressing rates that do not currently meet the cost of service, including residential rates, as well as commercial solid waste and organic cart rates. And then depending on the options selected, the city has available funds from its rate stabilization portion of the solid waste enterprise to reduce the impact to ratepayers and remit a portion of recology as they did in 2024. I'll, I want to point out the typo. It says 600,000 and that was meant to be a maximum of 500,000, as you'll see on a future slide. So my apologies for missing that. Next slide, please. So the table reflects the difference between what the city currently charges and the cost of service based rates. And there's also a reflection of the nominal difference in the highlighted column, as well as the percentage difference. And you'll notice that for the smallest volume of subscription for the 20 and 32 gallon customers, that these rates are the furthest from achieving the cost of service. However, this is a long-term vision and the city has, had begun this process in 2021. And over the past four years has moved closer and closer in narrowing that gap between rates and the cost of service rate, as you see in the graph at the top of this slide. And for reference, residential subscriptions, more than 70% of those subscriptions are made up of 20 gallon and 32 gallon subscriptions. Next slide, please. So we have two options to consider for residential rates in order to increase revenues and address the cost of service. And those are shown in the tables here. The first showing a range of increases of $7 all the way up to $8.50, depending on the cart size. And then the second option showing additional increases of 50 cents for each cart size. Next slide, please. We're also recommending increasing commercial solid waste and organic cart rates for the 20 gallon and 32 gallon subscription sizes. For the 64 gallon carts and the 96 gallon carts, as well as commercial bins, which are those customers who have a container with a volume equal to or greater than one cubic yard. We're recommending no increases as those rates currently meet their cost of service. Next slide, please. So this is a review of the rate increase options proposed. For either option, we're recommending the implementation of the commercial solid waste and organic cart increases, as you see on this slide, the $6.50 for 20 gallon, the $5.75 per month increase for the 32 gallon subscriptions. And then we present two options for residential. The first, the first chart, $7 increase to the 20 gallon customer, ranging all the way up to $8.50 per month increase to the 96 gallon customer. And then option two, which would increase the 20 gallon customers' rates by $7.50 per month, all the way up to the 96 gallon customer who would see a $9 increase per month. Under option one, this would add additional revenues of more than $1.5 million. And the city could authorize up to $500,000 in terms of the use of reserves from the solid waste enterprise to reduce its balancing account deficit. And under option two, this would result in $1.6 million of additional revenue approximately. And the city could authorize slightly less in the use of reserves to reduce its balancing account deficit and its shortfall. Next slide, please. The next four slides are included as a rate comparison to neighboring agencies. All of these agencies are members of Rethink Waste or the SBWMA and thus are subject to the same cost increases as well as the same hauler. So we think it's a helpful comparison. We'll go ahead and skip these slides in the interest of time, but what you'll notice is that San Mateo rates, both current and proposed, remain less than over half of the other rates for each subject size. So I'll return the presentation to Jack.
So to reiterate, the rates must cover the cost of solid waste services, which include garbage, recycling, compost collection and disposal and all city fees. And while in prior years, rates were structured progressively as pay as you throw, we can no longer do that. The rate structure proposed moves the city closer to accurately charging for the cost of service for each customer base. And for various reasons, additional increases will be needed in future years. Staff recommends option two because it best brings rates into alignment with the cost of providing the service and best manages our existing reserves to provide rate stabilization in future years as we continue to bring rates into alignment and face future increases. The rate adoption timeline is, we are requesting tonight for the approval to mail the public notice. The 45-day public notice mailing deadline is this Friday, January 17th. March 3rd, we will reconvene for the public hearing where ratepayers have an opportunity to protest. And if approved, the rates will become effective on April the 1st. The request of council is to ask clarifying questions, to provide direction on the preferred increase options for residential and commercial customers, to authorize staff to mail a Prop 218 notice and to approve remittance of up to $400,000 from reserves. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Go ahead and open it up for public comment. Mr. Clerk, do we have any requests for public comment?
Mayor Newsom, I have not received any requests to speak in chambers. If you're participating remotely and you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Now I will give you just a few moments to do so. Mayor Newsom, there's no request to speak on this item.
Nobody wants to talk about trash. Okay. Well, then we'll go ahead and close public comment and open it up to questions and comments and direction from the council. Does anyone want to start? Yes, council member.
Can I just move that we accept option two? Or do we have to have discussion?
I, I'm, I'm, does any, I know I have a few questions. Does anyone else have questions? Or comment? Yes?
Well, I, I would just concur with the spirit and, and indicate that I intended to comment that we support option two. And I just want to note that I, I think the presentation does, does a good job of explaining why. Although for, for council members who may be in their first meeting and digging into this on top of a number of other items, it's, it's, no, it's a mean feat. And as somebody who's been representing our city on the Rethink Waste Board for a couple of years, I've, I've gotten a deeper appreciation for the situation being presented. The city has a goal to get to cost of service by 2035. And we have a, uh, challenges in potential increases in fees that we need to meet while still trying to meet that other goal, right? So we have two parallel goals. And we need to work on doing what we can to manage them both in a way that still gives ratepayers something that they can expect year after year, something smooth that doesn't hit them all in one lump sum. Anything that we don't pay today, which I think our presenters did a good job of, of indicating, we have to defer and may have Uh, we have to defer and may have to pay tomorrow in a larger lump sum. Uh, and and maybe larger than we currently know today. Um. The, uh. Some, you know, a- as an example. We have like electric vehicle infrastructure or zero emissions vehicle infrastructure. Uh, at the at the site, uh, the Shoreway Recycling Center. Uh, and more, maybe, uh, in. It more in the spirit of what Councilmember Fernandez was getting at. I I will end there and see what happens.
Does anyone else? Yeah, go ahead.
Ditto.
Okay, so, um.
Just one, one comment to point out that. Given that we're going to be looking to try and save as much money for the city as possible, the fact that we're ex. We're we under option two, we would be expending a a smaller amount of the reserve. I think that's something that is worthwhile noting.
Absolutely. Well, I I'll start with saying that I am in support of option two. Uh, but I also have been helping my mom a lot. She's a retired widower and. Yeah, she's her costs of living are out of control. And one of the observations that I've made as I've been deep diving into her bills recently. Is that her garbage can is twice the size of the garbage can at my house. And so one of the things I was curious is, could we? Do, is there some sort of outreach we could do as we give the proposed rate hike to say, hey, are you over bin? Meaning, uh, you know, this this house my mom moved into used to have a family of five living there. Now it's just her. She clearly doesn't need a sixty four pound bin. Um, and it would clearly be behoover to downgrade. But I don't see when I look at my own bill, like, how to even go about doing that. So I'm wondering if that would be something we could do in partnership with, like, rethink waste, which is. You know, your house of four, these are probably the amount of. The size of recycling bin and the size of composting bin. Actually, I think recycling is all the same, right? But but composting and and trash bins, this is probably what's appropriate for your size house. If you're over bin. You know, and and as we're proposing a rate hike. Can we communicate? Like, how do you? How do you go ahead and say, I'd like this bin removed and I'd like to downsize? So does that make sense? And did I get a question in or was that just a rambling?
I I can't speak to whether it was a question or not, but I certainly got what you were saying. And and the issue is we do, um. Quarterly, uh, bill inserts and I can work closely with recology is here tonight and their customer service representative. Um, who is fantastic, um, is here and I'm sure that she is hearing you as well. And and yes, we can come up with an outreach piece that would. Pose that question to rate payers.
I I certainly think it makes it easier for people to swallow the pill of. You know, hey, we're also looking out to make sure that you're not overpaying for services you don't need.
They they regularly do, um, that kind of activity, but it is generally based on a request from the homeowner. But we can make sure the homeowners know that it's an option.
That would be great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And if I can clarify through the mayor, so a motion is not required for this item. Um, just consensus consensus of the council is fine. Sounds like there's a some coalescing around option two. The action of the council that will be taken will be at the public hearing. Um, in in March.
March third.
At March third. Thank you. So. Uh, I think.
Sounds like you have everything you need. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to. New business item fourteen. City council appoints to external agencies and liaison roles.
Wave well, excuse me, um, we have one more item before that.
I skipped one, I'm sorry. Okay. Jumping ahead, now jumping back. Number thirteen, new construction reach codes for twenty twenty two code cycle ordinance introduction. Uh, we're gonna have a presentation from Andrea Chow, sustainability analyst. The, uh. Topic is inter introducing an ordinance to amend the San Mateo municipal code, chapter twenty three point twenty four. Energy code and chapter twenty three point seven zero green building code to require enhanced energy performance for new construction. Repeal unenforceable measures of the city's current reach codes and make minor edit to the city's electrical readiness requirements. And whenever you're ready, Andrea.
All right, one moment while I get my presentation up. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. It's Mayor Newsom, members of the council and public. My name is Andrea Chow. And I'm the sustainability analyst for the city of San Mateo. I have the pleasure of working with Peninsula Clean Energy and consultant TRC on developing reach codes that are before you tonight. And tonight I am accompanied by Blake Hershopp from PCE and Taylor Taylor from T. TRC who are joining remotely for the presentation. And now I'll continue with. Our item this evening. Staff's recommendation is to. Introduce an ordinance to amend San Mateo municipal code, chapter twenty three, twenty four, energy code and chapter twenty three, seventy green building code. And this ordinance will require enhanced energy performance for new construction, repeal unenforceable measures of the city's current reach code. And make a minor edit to the city's electric readiness requirements. All right, so. A little bit of background on reach codes. Every three years, the California Building Standards Commission updates the building code. We're currently more than midway through the twenty twenty two code cycle that started on January first, twenty twenty three. Uh, and will end December thirty first, twenty twenty five. At any time jurisdictions can adopt local building code amendments. That exceeds state requirements. And these are often referred to as reach codes when they require more sustainable building design and construction. This approach is important for meeting the city's climate action plan goals. And an important strategy to show how a community can be a local leader in climate solutions. And we here at the city of San Mateo have a very strong history of adopting reach codes to meet these goals. For the twenty twenty two code cycle, the city adopted a few reach codes. Uh, including requiring all electric new construction, requiring enhanced electric vehicle charging infrastructure. And also some electric readiness and electric equipment requirements during specific. The, uh. Specific residential remodels. Focusing in on the city's all electric requirement. All electric buildings have electric appliances for space and water heating, clothes drying and cooking. And by avoiding the use of natural gas and all electric building has a smaller carbon footprint using clean electricity. In the last five years, we've seen more than seventy cities across the state. Require new construction to be all electric. The city of Berkeley was notably one of the first to adopt such a requirement. And back in twenty nineteen. In April, twenty twenty three, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals and California Restaurant Association versus the city of Berkeley determined. That a local ordinance generally prohibiting the installation of gas infrastructure was preempted by federal law. Berkeley sought rehearing, but they were denied this request in January, twenty twenty four. And because of that federal court decision, the city had to pause enforcement of the currently adopted. All electric new construction requirement. In addition, the city's requirement for electric equipment. Um, and prohibiting gas infrastructure in in specific. Residential remodels is also paused. The city's reach code that requires enhanced electric vehicle charging infrastructure. And also other electric readiness measures. These are not impacted by the federal court decision and not the focus of tonight's, uh, item. So staff worked to identify a possible replacement reach code, given the need to pause the city's current new new construction requirement. And this approach is called the energy performance reach code for new construction. It's an alternative approach that conforms to the EPCA preemption standards set by the court. And Peninsula Clean Energy led the development of a model ordinance to support cities in its adoption. At the October seventh, twenty twenty four city council meeting. Staff presented this approach to replace the city's suspended reach code for new construction for council feedback. City council was supportive of this approach and directed staff to bring an ordinance for council consideration. As is part of our typical process, this ordinance went before the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission first. And was presented on December eleventh, twenty twenty four, and the commission re recommended city council approval of the ordinance. Across the state, cities have adopted the energy performance reach code and more locally. That includes Palo Alto, Brisbane, San Jose. And Burlingame and San Mateo County more recently. All right, getting into the details of our ordinance, which contain amendments to both the energy code and the green building code. So the energy code establishes whole building efficiency requirements, which account for. Buildings' energy use, including water heating, HVAC, solar and efficiency. The energy code includes both prescriptive and performance pathways for each building type to allow builders choices. And what the reach code does is primarily amend the energy code to apply higher standards. And compliance margins on specific metrics. Source energy being one of them. So really, the overall goal of this is to reduce emissions from new buildings. The slide shows the specific compliance margins by building type. And I don't want to get too into the weeds, but I think the main takeaway you're seeing from this table. Is that there's a metric that measures carbon, um, it's called source energy and. Uh, there are specific energy performance measures. Margins, uh, for each building type and they're all covered here. Uh, no, noting though that ADUs are exempt from the city's reach code. And this is to align with state legislation aimed at protecting and streamlining ADU development. While avoiding any perceived, uh, restrictions or perceived barriers. And then another component of this reach code is the electric readiness requirements that are. Uh, triggered when gas appliances are installed. And these electric readiness requirements are actually consistent with what will be adopted as part of the twenty twenty five energy code. Um, as mandatory. For new construction. I do want to take time to just kind of walk through one example. This was presented at the October city council meeting, but it just highlights how. This approach is more flexible than what's currently adopted and allows new buildings to have different choices. Uh, when meeting the reach code requirements. So to meet the higher standards, uh, and this is for a single family example. You can see, uh, on the all electric pathway, you're able to meet that EDR score of nine. By just choosing your electric space heating and electric water heating. If you want to include gas in your project, you can, but in order to. Hit that EDR score, you need to have increased efficiency and also increase your solar and, uh, install battery as well. So there are. Uh, the enhanced performance requirements would apply equally to both electric and mixed fuel projects. And they are cost effectively achievable through the energy code's performance pathway. Without requiring appliances that exceed federal efficiency standards. And there's lots more technical information available on this, and that's why cost effectiveness studies and modeling. Um, and data were were included as attachments to this report. The proposed ordinance also amends the building code, so the ordinance repeals the unenforceable co- components of the city's reach codes. So this includes all of the components I went over about the city's all electric new construction requirement. And the provisions that prohibit the installation of gas infrastructure in existing buildings. And then in addition, staff does recommend one minor edit. And that is just, again, for more consistency, our current electric readiness requirement. Requires that when a gas stove or gas dryer is installed in a renovated kitchen or laundry area, that that outlet is six feet away. Or be within six feet of the appliance. And we're recommending to change that to within three feet of of the appliance because that is consistent with the current twenty twenty two energy code. Uh, for new construction. Okay. So at the October seventh city council meeting, staff's report and presentation dealt. Well, well, deeper into the advantages and disadvantages with moving forward with the reach code. Uh, for this reach code, staff did host a developer roundtable over Zoom about the proposed ordinance. He shared feedback of from the developer stakeholders. You know, engagement was very time limited and it was targeted at developers. And this is because broad outreach. Doesn't always reach the right audience because again, this focuses on new construction. Uh, I've emphasized tonight that the proposed ordinance is more flexible than what the city's currently suspended reach code is. Uh, but despite, you know, this short implementation time that we're looking at. It it's an important time to. Um, encourage the most sustainable construction. And it aligns with our city's climate action plan to reduce emissions. And allows the city to continue showing, uh, showing up as a local leader in sustainability and in climate. All right, so based on the above, staff recommends city council adopt the proposed ordinance. If adopted, staff will file the ordinance with the California Energy Commission and the Building Standards Commission. The CEC would need to approve the city's reach quote ordinance prior to enforcement, and that can on average take three months. So. We're looking at implementation, uh, you know, roughly April through the end of the year. And that concludes my presentation for this evening. Thank you.
And before the council takes public comment, I just wanted to note. There is also a draft resolution that's attached to the staff reports. The staff recommendation is really to. Introduce the ordinance and also, uh, adopt the resolution. That has findings and those findings are referenced in the ordinance. So the staff recommendation is really twofold to introduce the ordinance and adopt the resolution that's part of the staff report that contains related findings.
Okay, do we need to read that ordinance before? When we when we go for a vote?
We can, uh. I can repeat that or the council can make that clear, like, when you're considering what motion to take.
Okay. Uh, well, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Mr. Clerk, are there any requests for public comment? I see one coming down the aisle.
Yes, Mayor Newsom, we have one request to speak in chambers. If you're participating via Zoom and wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Now I will give you just a few moments to do so. Our first speaker in chambers will be Robert Whitehead, and that'll be three minutes per speaker.
Evening and happy new year to all of you and congratulations to for councilmember Fernandez. And councilmember Subirko Godicki. Uh, it's a and and the mayor as well. Thank you all for the time you spent here tonight. And I wanted to. After congratulations, I want to mention that I am a member of the Peninsula Clean Energy Community Advisory Committee. I'm not speaking on the behalf. I'm speaking as. As my own, as an individual myself. But I am speaking tonight in behalf of San Mateo Climate Action Team. And three fifty Silicon Valley, as well as all my friends and elders in climate action. We all appreciate the city's work in adjusting local policy to confront our climate crisis. We support the reach codes for. Before you tonight for new construction. And look forward to the coming year when the next round of reach codes comes before the council. While the night the court decision barring cities from regulating methane gas was very disappointing. The proposed adjustment to use an energy performance reach code approach. Is a good path forward for the code effect of the year of two to twenty twenty five. Looking forward to what happens next in twenty twenty six. The decarbonization of our buildings is critical to meeting climate goals. We look forward to the city's continued work and leadership in the coming year. So thank you and thank you, staff, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Mayor Newsom. That concludes public comment.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and open up to the council for questions, comments and feedback. Does anyone want to begin? Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Andrea, for your presentation. Um, so just to confirm. What we're proposing is to repeal current unenforceable city codes. And make edits to the electric readiness requirements. That would apply to whole. Building efficiency requirements.
That's correct. Yeah, quickly. Yeah.
And to confirm other jurisdictions like Palo Alto, San Jose, Santa Cruz. Have also adopted similar energy performance reach codes.
Yes, now I'll clarify that the one edit that we're mentioning on our electric readiness measure that's unique to to San Mateo's edit. Um, and then I'm I'm not sure exactly how other cities repealed the ordinance. So. What's similar across is that they have adopted an energy performance reach code for new construction.
Okay. And so for new construction, just to reiterate that. Um, and then ADUs would be exempt?
Yes. ADUs are exempt.
Okay, I I personally, I'm supportive.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody wants? Okay. Councilmember, Faznash?
Thank you very much, Andrea. Um, another good presentation, a very complex topic. I just had one question. Can you give us more detail on the developer roundtable? And what were the comments made and? You know, key points of the discussion.
Yes, I just want to revisit. My notes from the developer roundtable. Since this developer roundtable was held in September of twenty twenty four prior to the. October meeting that we had at city council. It was sent to a list of developers and interested stakeholders who have engaged in, uh, with our city departments. Uh, we had, I think. We had, I think, six individuals attend, and we received a mix of feedback. But I think overall, the takeaway was that there weren't concerns specifically about the energy performance margins. There was actually a lot of discussion on the electric readiness measures. So we were talking a bit about that in the context. And I mentioned that those are 2025 Energy Code mandatory requirements to come. And that's really what we're helping prepare our community for. And then there was, there was a Zoom poll that was conducted asking whether or not developers would be supportive. And it was split. No one was enthusiastic. Unsurprisingly, I think the, that developers understand the intent of the REACH codes to push for sustainable design, but there isn't overwhelming enthusiasm for more regulation and restrictions.
And have you developed a strategy yet for how you're going to work with the developers going forward? I mean, will there be a regular series of roundtables or, you know, what's the plan?
Yeah, usually engagement happens with our planning team and specifically with the planner who is assigned to work with whatever project. So there, there's engagement depending on the project and, and the stakeholder.
Okay, I just, I would strongly recommend you have a regular schedule of, of engagement because things will change. And, you know, this could be, hopefully, as a result of some of the ballot measures that were passed in November, there will be more developer interest in developing in San Mateo. So a lot more work on your, your part. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
I'll be brief, but I'll mention that I support this amendment. The intent of our 2022 new construction electric REACH codes was to reach for cost-effective, higher-performance targets with regard to the energy and carbon footprint of our new buildings in our city in alignment with our climate action plan and our general plan goals, which were at the time perhaps in draft form, but now we have a, an adopted general plan. I, this ensures we keep that progressive trajectory into the next cycle. So I also just want to thank, of course, staff for the presentation and the work into this and Peninsula Clean Energy for help in developing a model code that we and Burlingame, Brisbane, and other East Palo Alto, other county cities can adopt to, to keep pushing at a, at a, at a leader's pace and acknowledge that this is just another huge benefit of having a joint powers agreement, county-run, not-for-profit energy provider that's able to not just provide clean renewable electricity, although that's awesome, but take expertise and, and guide the cities in our county to making the most of that product. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Nope. All right, seeing no other comments, I will say that I am in support of this. And I will call for a, a motion. Thank you. So moved.
I second.
Okay.
Just for clarity, the motion is
That's what I was about to say.
Introducing the ordinance and adopting a resolution.
What he said. Can we call for a vote, please? Thank you.
Senator Mayor Newsom, Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Sverko Goditski?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, and now we'll move on to new business, which I was eager to get on to earlier. City council appointments to external agencies and liaison roles for approval. We're going to review and provide direction on the 2025 appointments to external agencies, organizations, and liaison roles. Consider and approve the final appointments and the liaison list. And we're going to have this presented by city clerk, Martin McTaggart. Take it away, Martin.
Good evening, city council. Before you tonight is a very brief item. Let me bring that up for you. As Mayor Newsom mentioned, tonight, we will be discussing the city council appointments to external agencies and liaison roles. The recommendation from staff is to review and provide direction on the 2025 appointments to external agencies, organizations, and the city's liaison roles. And finally, to consider and approve the final appointments list. Just to give an overview of the timeline here and the process that is prescribed in the city council's adopted rules and procedures. Following the reorganization in December 2024, city clerk distributed a memo to each council member, including a list of potential liaison assignments. Each council member completed a ranked list in a manner which prioritizes the assignments of interest to them. And this was submitted only to the city clerk. City clerk assembled responses into a table and provided to the mayor. The mayor used the following criteria to make these assignments. Continuity assignments, which we'll get into in just a few moments, remain with the assignee unless that member has opted to step aside from that role. Assignments to be given to council members in their desired priorities, with number ones being first, two being second, and so forth. The mayor will then divide any remaining assignments amongst the council, attempting to equitably balance the distribution of assignments and associated workload. The mayor, working in consultation with the city manager and city clerk, utilized these responses to present the agenda report, which is before you tonight, and conducted a discussion in the first meeting of January regarding the liaison assignments with the final appointments to the liaison list, which was included as attachment one within the staff report. Just a quick note about the assignments as our roles and procedures provide for the mayor and deputy mayor. These assignments are typically assigned for the legislative committee, the budget and audit committee, planning commission, council of cities, and also the honorary chair of the Sister City Association is assigned to the mayor. A quick note on continuity assignments, the purpose here being that the strong need from council was the desire to have consistency and continuity in terms of council participation and representation. That the mayor, in the decision process of determining the liaison list, would maintain the current council member assigned as liaison to that body. The council would then have the opportunity during this meeting to review whether any supplemental designations are required as it relates to continuity assignments. And all continuity appointments should have also an assigned alternate so that that alternate, alternate can take over if needed. And on the screen here, you'll see our continuity appointments. So for our external agencies, that's City County Association of Governments or CCAG, Emergency Services Council, Peninsula Clean Energy PCE, San Francisco Airport Community Roundtable, San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department, South Bay, excuse me, South Bay Side Waste Management Authority or Rethink Waste, and the San Mateo Chamber of Commerce and DSMA or Dantong San Mateo Association. And internally, our Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission has been designated as a continuity appointment. On the screen here, you will see the proposed appointments. I'm not going to go through each one of those individually, but as you can see, these are the, as was included in attachment one to tonight's agenda report, these are the proposed appointments for our external agencies. On this slide, you will see the proposed appointments for internal committees. And as mentioned earlier, those roles are assigned to, generally assigned to the mayor and deputy mayor. And then on the screen, you will see here, these are the proposed appointments for the external liaisons. And last, we have the proposed amendment for our internal liaison. And then to conclude, staff's recommendation is to receive public comment on this item, provide any questions and comments to staff. And then finally, ultimately, review and provide direction on the 2025 appointments to external agencies and liaison roles. Consider approve, consider and approve the final appointments and liaison list. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, well, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. Is there any public comment or?
Just one moment.
I was going to say you might need a minute.
Let me double check.
I'm guessing we have no one in the audience.
Mayor Newsom, we have not received any requests to speak on this item.
Okay, well, then I'll go ahead and close public comment and open this up to questions, comments, and feedbacks from council. Does anyone want to go first? No? Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you through the mayor. Martin, thank you for your presentation. I did just want to ask about the difference between the number 11 on our list within external agencies board member appointments, which says San Mateo County Council of Cities, mayor and alternate. And then the internal committees, number 23, Council of Cities, City Selection Committee, Mayor Deputy.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor, could you repeat the first agency that you referred to?
Sure. So I, I feel like we have two, like instances that indicate the Council of Cities in our list. One is on, on the sheet in the administrative report, row number 11, that says San Mateo County Council of Cities, Mayor and Alternate. And then we have another one within internal committees that says Council of Cities, City Selection Committee.
Yes, my apologies. I believe that that may be a typo that we have on there. So that this would be assigned to the mayor and deputy mayor for that role.
Okay. That's all. No further questions.
Go ahead. Yes, of course.
So with clarification on that, does that mean that I'm removed as the alternate for Council of Cities?
That's correct.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
If you look at the City Selection Committee itself with the Council of Cities, that's usually the mayor and that's, you know, on the pointing body of like, I believe it's like MTC, ABAG, all the, it's different than the Council of Cities. There are two different things going on here. Martin, so I would probably stick with both right now. I would not remove one or the other. There are two different functions going on here.
Yeah, that was my understanding because if Rob can't make the vote for like TA or something, that is, and Adam shows up, that is different than me showing up for like a general meeting.
Yes, that is correct. My apologies for the confusion there.
All right, I, I'm just still confused about that. I guess I'm fine with leaving it. I'm not trying to take anything away from anybody. I just literally don't understand what we just said. And this came up actually today, right? So in that, there was a Council of Cities meeting. And there was a, a question about whether the mayor could attend for a moment. The mayor ended up attending, so there was no alternate needed. But I guess I just don't understand the distinction. So I'm happy to take it offline, but would appreciate talking about it later.
Can I take a stab at explaining it? Is that okay? Just as someone who's been around the Council of Cities for a while, I don't think that I, as alternate to like the general body, have any voting privileges. You get to vote and for the big, powerful positions like CCAG, TA, da, da, da. So you would be the alternate when we have the big meetings, when we have to vote on things or when there's a, there's an opening on MTC or what back mid, like whatever. And I'd just like be there when Rob couldn't be there to like glad hand and smile and look pretty. Right? Am I wrong? Cool. Thanks.
Does anyone else have any other questions, comments, or feedback?
I'm supportive of this list.
Okay, the only thing I would say was, you know, I've, I've been on the council now for two years. And I encourage everyone to make sure that you're looking ahead. And if you know you're not going to be able to make a meeting, it's important that we have representation. Because in the last two years, there's been cases where, you know, someone can't go and then rather than tell their alternate, they just don't have anyone attending. And we're way too big of a city and this, our, our say in these things is way too important to not be represented. So as you guys look at your assignments, make sure if you can attend, that you're letting your alternate know in advance so that we have coverage.
As of the last census, we are the biggest city in San Mateo County.
We are the biggest city in San Mateo County. And with that, I will call for a motion, to have a motion.
No, no motion required.
No motion required.
This is just general direction from a consensus of the council.
Well, then, item number 14 is closed. Now we move into reports and announcements. Does anyone in the council have announcements or things they want to talk about? Go ahead, Danielle, start.
Thank you, Mayor Rob. Great job facilitating the meeting today as well. So thank you. As I've walked around the community, I've heard from several residents. And this did come up on the December 4th North Central meeting about the request for deeper, quote unquote, enforcement via traffic surveys or speed surveys. And so actually, interesting timing that Mike Reagan came in today to talk about speed surveys. But I wonder if we could bring this back up as a council item to discuss. And just my thought on this, because I know we're in a budget deficit, is perhaps we ask staff to only look at maybe five to 10 thoroughfares across the city, so two within each district, let's say, that are the most concerning. And I'm sure DPW and PD have a list of recommendations for that. And I would also add that I think it's really important that we empower our police department to do the job, their job to the best of their ability. And, you know, I've heard again, several comments from residents, why is no one enforcing things? And so it's just not accurate or fair to them. I think, you know, we need to revisit this and make sure we're setting a really robust and equitable policy.
Sure. City manager, do you want to weigh in?
There are two other nodding heads, I guess, on this item?
Yes, there are.
Okay, so I can give a little bit of background on this. So we'll be meeting next Wednesday at the Traffic Policymakers Meeting, right, Ed? It's a meeting that we have monthly between Public Works and PD staff because they work really closely on this. And I asked to have an item on there. I'll be attending the meeting as well to talk about the surveys. I don't want to limit us to just 10 or whatnot. So I'd like us to just be able to work with staff to figure out exactly what's the best path forward. But I would
Right.
I would think that at a minimum that we look at hearing from our police officers who have their lived experience out there and what they're experiencing. But then also what we hear from our community, because we do receive quite a bit of inquiries just about speed enforcement, and that comes to the PD as well and to our Public Works team. So we can take all those data points in and then come back in the future with an item for presentation. Since I see, I see five nodding heads here.
Five nodding heads.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sverko Goditski?
Thank you, Danielle, for bringing that up. I had it on my list. Does anyone else? Go ahead. We'll start on this end and work our way back.
I just had one follow-up. There was a gentleman in public comment who talked about wanting information about the Caltrain meeting. And I think, City Manager, you were going to talk about it during reports and announcements. And maybe there's some way of publicizing it beyond just this.
So I went ahead during that five-minute break that we had to go up to Dennis, who was our participant here this evening, let him know the date. But we will have everything up online as of tomorrow morning. We have flyers already out there. I believe it's already on some of our communication channels, but getting it up on our website, too, and just sharing it far and wide. And I'd ask all of you to share it, too, at the same time on your networks.
I already have been.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that is, just so that the public is aware, it's on Thursday, January 30th, 6:00 PM here. The mayor and I will also be here along with Caltrain staff, but it's Caltrain's meeting to facilitate with our community members.
Yes, and that's important. Thank you.
Jeez, thank you for checking another one off my list. My list is getting smaller. Okay, go ahead, Nicole.
So first of all, thank you to the mayor for facilitating a really great meeting. I know me and councilmember Sverko Goditski had a very excellent first meeting, in part because of your facilitation. And thank you to staff for everything that you've been doing. Learning experience, and I'm really excited for the next four years. So a couple of items that I want to just make sure that I bring up to, in this portion. I, I think in follow-up to what Commissioner Patel had said earlier regarding the fatality that had happened a few months ago of few months ago of Yolanda VR on Peninsula, it is, one of the highest priorities that I have is working on infrastructure and pedestrian safety on Peninsula. There are too many accidents that have happened there, including that latest loss of life. So I have been talking to Mayor Peter Stevenson of Burlingame, who has the other side of Peninsula, on creating a by-city elected official task force on seeing how we can improve traffic safety on Peninsula between San Mateo Drive and 101. And so, I just wanted to let you know that Mayor Stevenson was open to that. We're just having preliminary conversations right now, but we will include staff soon as we get closer. And City Manager, are there any actions I need to take on something?
Well, I just want to see if there's two other council members that are, you know, interested in entertaining something like this with you.
Yeah, definitely.
Have you represent the city? There's one, two, three. Okay, I have enough direction. Just for a little bit of background right now, our city staff is meeting monthly between the staff of the city of Burlingame and the city of San Mateo. The one caveat I would say is it would probably be a quarterly kind of check-in with elected officials, but I will defer to our city attorney whether or not there has to be a public meeting. So.
Yeah, we can look into this further and determine what to bring back to the council to formalize this. It may very well be a Brown Act body if you have elected officials from two public agencies, as opposed to a body solely less than a quorum of this city council acting on an ad hoc item. But just so you're aware, this could be a body subject to the Brown Act, but we'll look into it further as far as future council action.
Great. I look forward to that guidance. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney and Mr. City Manager. The other request that I have is going forward, as we have two new council members on the city council, moving forward, I would like to request that any renewals or reappointments of any commissioners are reviewed by the city council and are not automatically made by staff.
So I'll defer to Martin, but right now, everything is through the city council in the review and the renewal. Now, there are steps of the process. If the council's interested in looking at how we go through the appointment process for boards and commissioners, I believe we're bringing an item to check in on boards and commissioners. Martin, when's that, March or?
In March, yeah.
In March. And so at that time would be the appropriate time to have a further discussion as to what the council's expectations are regarding the process, if there's any refinements that want to be made as part of that process. That would be the appropriate time to have that dialogue and discussion and provide direction to staff.
Perfect. I'm fine with process and discussing process, but I do just want to make sure, like automatically, we are not automatically renewing any appointments.
So that has always
That doesn't happen. Okay, great.
I think what you're probably
Alluding to?
Alluding to or understanding to is that if you're a current boards commissioner, typically, we don't make you go through another application process or an interview process, so to speak. And if you want to continue on and you've signaled to us that you want to, then you just get to be, I guess, reappointed or bring before the council on a reappointment. If you're looking for something else in the process, we're having, making everybody come back for an interview.
No.
And reapply.
No, that's not what I'm
Okay, well, you can talk about just how you would want to approach it. It'd be
Okay. Is that a March conversation?
That's a March conversation.
Okay, then let's hold it till March.
Because we're not going to go out and do any recruitment until we check in with the council.
Fabulous. I love that.
Okay.
Great. Another item. I was really sad to learn that Drager's is going to be closing in downtown. That's a really important, you know, source grocery in downtown. And, you know, now with the loss of Trags that we lost a few years ago, I don't think we have the one market on North B Street and then the produce market on Third. So I just want to encourage our staff to, I hope that you are engaging and trying to find a new grocery for that area.
So specifically, we're already engaged. We have a retail consultant, and we haven't actually brought the retail consultant on board, but they're actually really helping and assisting us. And so staff has already reached out to the professionals in this area. It'll be very difficult to get a grocery store to come in for the next, say, 18 to 24 months. But thinking about the future, about the long term with the redevelopment of that site, it is actually, well, the council, actually, you can't, you cannot, they'd have to come back before the council to change the use on the bottom floor. It's a grocery store. And so we'll continue that direction. But city staff already, as of today, is reaching out to different groups and brokers and actual retailers to do some type of pop-up in that location until the demolition of the building happens. So we're looking at trying to activate. And we'll work hard. It's very difficult. It just is, but we've got to work with the owner, lane partners, and any type of firm that might want to come in there and activate that location. But there's tons of ideas swirling around, and we're hearing from different community members, too, on that. So duly noted.
Fabulous. Great. And then just a couple of save the dates, just for the community to know about. I was reminded as I see our chief back here, the email went out today that the PAL Lights and Sirens Gala is on April 11th, so you can buy your ticket. And then we're having our Pride Parade in downtown San Mateo on Saturday, June 14th. And January 25th is Lunar New Year.
All right. Well, I hadn't looked up any of those, so thank you for bringing them all up.
Mayor.
Yes, of course.
Thank you through the mayor. I have two quick announcements. One is that there will be a League of California Cities meeting on Friday, January 24th, for our council members here on the dais. I hope everyone will consider attending. Details have been included in the event calendar that we have. So please check that out. I hope you'll join us. We'll have legislators in attendance. And please, please take a look.
It's also a joint session between Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties. We're all going to be participating.
That's right. And we'll have, there will be legislators from both counties, or representing both counties. It'll be at the California Life Sciences Building in South San Francisco, so it's not too far for us. But I'll just note that this is a meeting for the council members to attend as part of the Council of Cities thing that we were just talking about. So I'll be there, and I hope everyone can join us. My second announcement is that I'd like, first of all, I appreciated a consensus from council on moving ahead with our reach code item tonight. It's important. And as Robert Whitehair mentioned, I, too, am looking forward to the next cycle, which is coming up soon. In between, I wanted to ask council for permission to bring a resolution next meeting noting the city's intent to study a CalGreen reach code in that upcoming cycle. And consider adopting it for the next code cycle, but not necessarily bind ourselves to anything except considering it. While this discussion on reach codes, and specifically energy performance-related reach codes, is fresh in our minds, I just wanted to make this minor request. And in fact, Andrea had included some language related to this in the previous council's October administrative report, and I'm just going to read it to refresh our memories. But she included this in our last meeting. Staff is currently monitoring potential reach code opportunities for the 2025 code cycle. Every triennial code cycle, the California Green Building Code, or CalGreen, contains voluntary measures, essentially reach codes, that jurisdictions can adopt. The 2025 CalGreen draft language has a proposed voluntary measure that would require a new or replaced air conditioning system to be a heat pump system as a primary path. An alternate path to compliance is the installation of an air conditioner that is installed with, along with six other efficiency measures, including duct installation, air sealing. But essentially, I hope you'll get the idea that it's very similar to what we just talked about for this code cycle that hasn't yet finished, in that it has a primary pathway of an electric appliance, but the flexibility of adopting something else. And I see that the city attorney has
I'm trying to understand, like you're proposing something for the next county?
Um.
Not quite clear what you're proposing.
Yes.
For the next cycle for the green building code.
Yes, in a way. So the California Energy Commission has developed an internal sort of reach code for the next cycle that seeks to exceed with performance standards and pathways, similar to something we just passed, or are looking forward into passing for this recycle. They shared it with Andrea and the city. And they invited me and Andrea to represent the city of San Mateo at an electrification summit in Sacramento that's meant to highlight cities that are considering electrification codes for the next cycle, provided we can share some indication that we will at least study it. And I feel that Andrea effectively indicated that we already intended to study this code. I'm just asking that, I discussed this with Andrea, with Alex and Christina, and with the CEC, and they just asked if the council could consider a resolution to study adopting the code. That's all they need to allow us to potentially represent the city.
So the regular triennial building code and green, the reach code, the adoption cycle, you know, that's going to start in the ball anyway. So you're proposing a interim resolution stating the city's going to study this? I mean, it's already a part of the city's work plan.
Yes.
So we're just saying what we're already doing.
Yes.
We're already going to be committed to studying this itself. I believe you're going up to Sacramento, right?
Well,
If you get a resolution.
If people are okay with this. I feel like it doesn't bind us. This is something that we were planning to study. We are not, we are not held to doing it. And this summit is being offered free of charge, outside of travel. I don't have to go, but I think it's an opportunity.
Just to confirm, we are just studying this?
Yeah. And in addition, I think Andrea can provide, if council is okay with
Yes, I'm okay, as long as we're studying it first.
One, two, I see you have council majority.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, solid report. Okay. Anyone else have anything else? Oh, yeah, I guess I should ask if I have any reports or announcements. I think we've covered most. One of the things that we don't need to do tonight, but we've had a few council members ask, is, is there anything that we can do to aid or support the fire relief, like in the way of a fund? I'm sure that as the weeks go by and this comes along, that there will be some things that kind of structurally come into play. But I wanted to see if there was agreement from the council that if there was such a relief fund, is there interest in the council in doing something to contribute or maybe just bringing attention to what that fund looks like?
So while, of course, I'm interested, I feel my first reaction is to try and remember, first, I guess, maybe whether you're asking that the city make a donation and/or our policy with regard to asks for such things.
Yeah, that would be a question to our city manager and city attorney is, what is, or do you want to come back and let us know what might be?
I think what I want to do is I want to come back and let you know. I haven't had a chance yet. I know I'm going to follow up with our finance director and also talk to our legal advisor, and then we can come back and let you know. We can have an update in your council weekly update.
That'd be great. Thank you so much. And so everyone's in agreement? Thank you. Okay. Sorry, one sec. I thought my voice was going to make it, but I think it made it to about 10:15. Okay, tonight, we're going to adjourn.
Just through the mayor, I have an announcement, too, at the same time. I just want to have an update, specifically if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Just looking at next meeting, next meeting is Monday, or no, Tuesday, the 21st of January. Just from the standpoint of meeting management and looking at, we have two big meeting items right now on the schedule. And the study session, we're supposed to, study session right now is set for the Humboldt Bike Lane item, and that's only 90 minutes. We typically, previously, were able to start at 5 o'clock, but understanding, I believe, council member availability, we have to start now at 5:30. That limits us significantly. And so looking at having that meeting on the Humboldt Bike Lanes on February 3rd and have it be a standalone item that evening, so that we have ample amount of time to have that discussion and get public comment on it. And then what we'll do is going into next Tuesday's meeting is the main event will be the Historic Resources Program and having that discussion. And then the study session, we'll go ahead and we'll move up to downtown survey. We were looking at doing that in February, but we're good to go, so we can bring that item as part of the study session. So there will be two main items, downtown survey study session, and then the regular meeting will just be the Historic Resources Program. And then we'll come back on February 3rd with Humboldt item.
I'm agreeable to that as the person who represents the Humboldt Bike Lanes.
Yeah. In addition, the new council members have to drive to Sacramento after that meeting, so I think we're definitely all for that.
Okay, great. So we'll go ahead and we'll get that out to the community so that they know exactly the new dates, starting tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Start in a rub.
No, thank you. I appreciate it.
That would be a good way to show that, you know, there were a lot of comments about how we weren't getting programs out early enough and notice. Have at it.
Gave them an extra week, or two weeks. Okay, before we move into adjournment, I would like to thank former council member Hedges for being here the entire meeting. And I think this just goes to show how much he misses being up here on the dais. So thank you, Rich. Okay. Tonight, we're going to adjourn in the memory of President Carter. In memory of President Jimmy Carter, we reflect on his lifelong dedication to public service, humanitarian efforts, and an unwavering commitment to peace. As the 39th President of the United States, he championed human rights, brokered the historic Camp David Accords, and worked tirelessly through the Carter Center to promote global health and democracy. His humility and kindness and his deep faith left a lasting impact on the world. President Carter's legacy as a servant leader and an advocate for justice will continue to inspire generations. And now we'll take a pause for a moment. Okay. And finally, on another note, the recent firestorms and wind and weather events that have affected Southern California have led to devastating fire activity, causing immense challenges and losses for many families and communities. All of us have been touched by this. In fact, I've heard in the last week from a family member who, a family that lives down there who's originally from here. So it's not just second degree, it's actually first degree, people that we know. Our thoughts are with all of those affected by these tragic events, and we stand in solidarity with the residents of Los Angeles County as they face these difficult times. To support the efforts, and we talked about this a little bit at the beginning of the meeting, and combat the massive fires, fire departments across San Mateo County have deployed a strike team with over 150 skilled personnel, approximately two dozen engines, and a drone to aid in firefighting and recovery efforts. From San Mateo County Consolidate, San Mateo Consolidate alone, we currently have 13 firefighters deployed and three trucks. What that also means, and, you know, I remind people, is that, you know, all fire departments that are not deployed are here and greatly understaffed, generally to the count of between 10 and 20% of their understaffing. So what I'm getting at is, when you see the firefighters out on the road, make sure you give them, you know, supports and waves. To continue, for those unfamiliar, a strike team is a specialized resource assignment consisting of five fire engines and one strike team leader, with each engine staffed by four dedicated firefighters. This deployment is a testament to the bravery and the commitment of our first local first responders, who continue to put themselves in harm's way to protect lives and property. So we'll take a moment to acknowledge the sacrifice being made by the affected families, to express our gratitude for the first responders working tirelessly on the front lines, and to remember the at least 15-plus people who have lost their lives. Together, we send heartfelt support and hope for their safety and resilience during this challenging time. We'll take a moment of silence. And with that, I close this first meeting of 2025.